Council meeting, regular meeting of January 20th, I mean, sorry, January 24th, 2022. We called the meeting to order at seven o'clock exactly. Can we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Here.
Councilmember Vardalas.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Big Stick.
Here.
And Mayor Beer.
Here. Thank you, Sarah. Now I'm going to read the land acknowledgement. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatouche Aloney peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Ramatouche Aloney peoples for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land, and in accordance with their tradition, the Ramatouche Aloney have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for peoples who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatouche Aloney people. Okay, we have the salute to the flag by Mayor Pro Tem Big Stick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mayor Beer, may I make a few announcements with respect to the meeting format tonight?
Please.
This meeting is being held by video conference with no physical location, open to the public, pursuant to the provisions of Government Code Section 54953, as amended by AB 361, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The public can observe and participate in the meeting via the Zoom link provided in the agenda, or by phone to the dial-in number and webinar ID in the agenda. The meeting may also be observed live on local TV Channel 26, or online at www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream. For this meeting, live verbal public comments will be made through participation by Zoom. For members of the public participating via Zoom, use the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak on an agenda item, or for those participating by phone, use star nine to raise your hand to request to speak when the mayor calls upon that agenda item. The city clerk will call upon speakers at the appropriate time and allow you to unmute after calling your screen name or the last four digits of your phone number if you're dialing in. Please clearly state your full name for the record at the start of your comment. Written and email public comments will not be read during the meeting, but will be made part of the written record and were provided to council members for those email comments that were received by noon today. The format of this meeting may be altered, or the meeting may be canceled if needed. You may check on the status of the meeting by visiting the city's website at www.cityofpacifica.org for any updates.
Thank you, Sarah. So tonight, we have a couple special presentations, and the first one is a proclamation, Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Tonight, we have Dr. Sue Stevens, who will present, who will be present to receive the proclamation and make a brief comment on behalf of San Mateo County Human Trafficking Program Coordinator Pamela Estes. So thank you so much, Dr. Stevens, for being here with us tonight. I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. The proclamation of the City of Pacifica National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, January 2022. Whereas the United States Senate designated January 11th as National Human Trafficking Awareness Day in 2007, and beginning in 2010 by presidential proclamation, each January has been designated National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And whereas, human trafficking involves commercial and sexual exploitation and labor exploitation, sex trafficking is defined as a commercial sex act that is induced by forced fraud or coercion, but the person has not attained the age of 18 years old, forced fraud or coercion is not required. Labor trafficking is defined as the recruitment, harboring, transportation, provision, or obtaining of a person for labor or services through the use of force, fraud, or coercion, for the purpose of subjection to involuntary servitude, debt bonnaging, or slavery. And whereas, human trafficking is a human rights violation, and a violation of both federal and California law. It also promotes the breakdown of families and communities, fuels organizational crime, deprives countries of human capital, undermines public health, and imposes large economic costs. And whereas, the crime of human trafficking is present in every country and every US state, and the FBI has identified California and the San Francisco Bay Area as an area of high prevalence for human trafficking. Although human trafficking is illegal, victims often do not recognize their victimization, do not know that help is available, or where to seek assistance. And whereas, forced labor, involuntarily domestic servitude, and commercial sexual exploitation of adults and youth have been found to exist within local communities. And whereas, public awareness about human trafficking still needs to reach broader communities and communicate more information about the awareness of this crime. And whereas, the county of San Mateo has dedicated resources, including the San Mateo County Human Trafficking Program, and has supported the efforts of the San Mateo County Police Chiefs and Sheriff Association, and has partnered with other governmental and non-governmental organizations to identify and address human trafficking within San Mateo County. Now therefore, I, Mary Beer, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and all its citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2022 as Human Trafficking Prevention Month in the City of Pacifica, and encourage its council members, employees, and residents to support the county of San Mateo's effort in the fight against human trafficking, and take action of one or more ways listed in the attached exhibit done this 24th day of January 2022. And we do have a document that tells a lot of ways that you can participate and take action against human trafficking, and it can be found on our city website, www.cityofpacifica.org on the homepage, and also about under Pacifica News and Events page. Sarah, thank you so much for getting that up and for getting a link on there. I appreciate it. And so I introduce to you all Dr. Sue Stevens.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Beer, Mayor Pro Tem Big Stick, and council members. Thank you for your time and for placing this important proclamation on the agenda to bring this issue, the crime of human trafficking, to the attention of those participating in this meeting tonight. I'm Sue Stevens. I live in San Mateo County. I'm a physician, and I'm volunteering with the Human Trafficking Program to raise awareness among care providers in our county. I'm pleased to be here to accept this proclamation. Unfortunately, many people still think human trafficking is a crime that only happens in other countries, but they couldn't be more mistaken. It occurs throughout the United States and in San Mateo County. It happens to women and girls, men and boys, foreign nationals, and US citizens. In fact, in 2021, the San Mateo County Human Trafficking Program conducted a voluntary assessment of local agencies and organizations, and quote, "During 2020, from the 20 responses received, a range of 282 to 306 human trafficking victims were identified who had some nexus with San Mateo County." An average of over 23 victims per month. These responses include minors and adults, labor and sex trafficking victims. We have no way of knowing how many people are really victimized and who remain undetected at this point. The San Mateo County Human Trafficking Program was created in 2015. It's the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office Program in cooperation with the San Mateo County Police Chiefs and Sheriff Association. It is currently staffed by Pamela Estes, the Human Trafficking Program Coordinator and fearless leader. The San Mateo Human Trafficking Program works to enhance the response to human trafficking countywide in several different ways, seeking to encourage collaborative partnerships among county agencies and non-governmental organizations, working to enhance the delivery of services to victims, training law enforcement, providing training and education, and raising community awareness about the crime of human trafficking through a variety of events throughout the year. The Human Trafficking Program hosts a monthly meeting called the Human Trafficking Initiative. I attend these meetings. It's open to members of governmental, non-governmental faith and community-based organizations, and members of the public who have a role or interest in the response to human trafficking within San Mateo County. The HTI meetings focus on the response to human trafficking within the county, along with delivering relevant information on all aspects of human trafficking. To contact the Human Trafficking Program with any questions, request training for your agency or organization, or get more involved in the anti-trafficking movement, you can email, all one word, stophumantrafficking@smcgov.org, or visit the San Mateo County Human Trafficking Program website, which is again, one word, stophumantraffickingSMC.org. Thank you for passing this resolution and inviting me to be here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens. We appreciate you being here. Any comments from council? Go ahead, Sue.
Okay. Does that mean like bye? I leave?
Oh, no. Sue Vardalas, our councilwoman.
There's a lot of Sues. No, I just want to thank you for everything that you're doing. It's really an important subject, and thank you so much for being there.
Okay, thank you.
Tiger.
Thank you.
I echo, I echo what Councilwoman Vardalas just said. I'm rendered pretty speechless, and I usually try and say something other than thank you when we do special proclamations, and I just, meditating on that level of what to my sensibility is evil, over the course of years, I'm still speechless, and I think I might be following up with one of those meetings to check out what that looks like, so that maybe I can become more aware and have something more productive to say. So that all having been said, thank you for being here.
Thank you. That's really kind.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Hi, Dr. Stevens. Thanks so much for being here tonight. And Mayor Beer, thanks for that proclamation and really going through those details, because I think this is a topic that we all think we know what it's about until we start hearing details and we go, whoa, really? What? Every state? The San Francisco Bay Area? I mean, we think we're so enlightened, and there's so many progressive things here, and it is absolutely everywhere, including Pacifica. So it's really important to be reminded, and I guess I always think of this topic as sort of a if you see something, say something moment, because if something doesn't seem right, you know, it might not be. And we have our police, and we have resources to, you know, bring it up, bring it forward. So thank you so much for this.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I wanted to thank Susan for coming. I do know, if I remember right, Chief Stidle can correct me, but we actually did have an incident of it in the north end of town a few years back of human trafficking. So it can happen in Pacifica. It has happened in Pacifica. And like Councilmember Beckmeyer said, you know, if you see something, say something. Thank you. Bye.
Yeah, and I also recognize in the proclamation, it talked about victims don't often notice, don't know that they're being victimized, and I think that really affected me. And I know that there's probably a lot of people who feel that way. And so, yeah, I was definitely emotionally taken by the topic, and I'm just really glad you're here tonight. I think it's really important. So thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you. You know, I have to say, I'm jumping into this. I don't know a lot about it. I'm kind of just, you know, getting started. I'm like a drop in the ocean right now. But, you know, it's one of the things that's come to my attention, and just recently in these past years, that the statistics on actual numbers are lower than they were a year ago. And, no, it's diabolical. The reason is COVID, and that the traffickers have the victims inside the houses, and they're watching them, and they're tailing, of course, with their cell phones, and so they can't report. You know, they can't get out, you know, to even say that they need help. So it's like, it's sad. You'd think the numbers are lower for a good reason, but it's actually a bad reason.
Well, that's why your work is so important. So welcome, and we hope to see you later.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now, should I go?
Oh, yes, you should go now.
Thanks so much. Take care. Bye.
Okay, we have another special presentation tonight by the San Mateo County Libraries. It's their annual report, and tonight, we're going to be, at least I'm going to be meeting for the first time, our new library manager, Stephanie Saba, and I'm really excited. So hello, Stephanie.
Hi, good evening.
Nice to meet you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I grew up in Pacifica, and I'm so thrilled to be back here and managing the Pacifica Libraries. So I am very pleased to present the library's annual report for the fiscal year of 2020 and 2021. Sorry, next slide, please. So first established as a county-free library in 1912, the Library Joint Powers Authority was formed in 1999. Today, each of our 13 libraries is part of a larger family, offering transformative experiences, an inclusive sense of place, and an environment for learning. Next slide. The unique diversity and complexity of those we serve, about 284,000 people live in our service area and inspire and drive our services. We continually assess the needs of our users to respond with thoughtfully designed programs and services that enrich and uplift our communities. Next slide, please. Despite our challenges this year, we proved to be a nimble organization with a flexible strategic plan that allowed us to pivot, innovate, and quickly respond to provide much-needed services to the public. Next slide, please. San Mateo County Libraries continues to be a high-performing organization. Some standout benchmarks include an increasing population of registered library card users, and an outstanding 93% favorability rating. Next slide, please. Locally, the Pacifica Libraries had 19,783 curbside visits, and circulated 94,754 items this past fiscal year. Next slide, please. Staff ingenuity and thoughtful mobilization resulted in many new and reimagined services. There are so many wonderful accomplishments to be proud of, and I am excited to highlight a few of them tonight. Next slide, please. Staff innovated ways to educate and entertain kids, teens, and adults through high-quality virtual experiences this year. Many of our programs were offered in a language other than English, or in multiple languages, making them warm and welcoming to more of our community. Next slide, please. Our ongoing commitment to closing the digital divide is stronger than ever. When schools closed, we immediately increased the number of Wi-Fi hotspots to keep our community connected and learning. We've worked closely with schools and community partners to ensure those most in need have distance learning support. We've also invested in digital literacy efforts. Staff began providing one-on-one tech support through Zoom, and our workforce development programs have reached hundreds of people to provide vital support, given the job losses that follow the COVID-19 outbreak. Next slide. Our commitment to making our libraries equitable for all was strengthened through staff equity trials and new equity author series. Additional author visits throughout the year supported community growth, understanding, and dialogue. Our author visits became widely popular for all ages. In addition to our adult author events, we hosted 17 youth authors in schools throughout the county, and we gave away over 55,000 bucks to the community. Next slide, please. Even though we were unable to welcome visitors into our buildings for most of the year, we connected with our communities through more than 186,000 curbside and walkout visits. We also offered free printing and 3D printing services, and continued our meal programs during the pandemic as a go-to service in the Half Moon Bay Library and the East Palo Alto Library. Next slide, please. In addition to providing new and unique services during the past year, we also spent many months preparing plans to safely reopen. Here is a short video that captures the excitement and the enthusiasm of the day. In March, our family of libraries grew as we welcomed the North Bay Library into San Mateo County Libraries. Next slide, please. And the beautiful New Brisbane Library was completed and open to the public in April. Our newest library facility has been enthusiastically embraced by the community. Next slide, please. You can see the maker space of the New Brisbane Library, as well as a part of the children's area, too. Next slide, please. COVID-19 exasperated inequities in youth learning, disproportionately affecting youths of color. With our history as leaders during the summer, and encouragement of our governing board to think big, we developed and succeeded in a robust set of positive interventions. We developed Library Explorers, an in-library camp experience. We offered our families Create Program to bring engaging experiences home, and we expanded our award-winning Big Lift Inspiring Summer Program to five weeks, serving close to 1,000 youth. Next slide, please. I'm not sure if this sound is working on the...
Is Stephanie, I knows. We might want to try that again, because I don't think anybody could hear it. And I didn't, I didn't know how long it was, so I didn't want to like stop in the middle, but I'm willing to like have you play it again, because I think it's important information, and it looks so cute.
Are you able to do that, Sarah? Is the sound working on your end? I can also get the link and put it in the chat.
I'm going to just stop and see if I can switch the sound to the computer sound rather than my microphone. See if that works.
I wasn't sure if it was just me, but.
I apologize for that.
It was cute even without the sound.
It's a really special video. We made that during the summer, and it's really lovely.
Nice.
I don't think the sound's working still.
No, I'm afraid not. Sometimes that just happens.
Yeah, and like, maybe it's the file size, too.
Well, perhaps we can put the link, you know, out for people. Maybe we can put it and connect with Pacifica, so people can see it. We can play it at the Pacifica Collaborative if you'd like to. We'll get it.
Thank you so much. Yes, I will, Sarah, I will send you that link. Thank you. So we are looking forward to accomplishing many new and exciting priorities this year, including opening the new Atherton Library this spring, and continuing to work towards new libraries in East Palo Alto and in Pacifica, refreshing library interiors, and constructing new maker spaces in Foster City, Millbrae, Belmont, and then also working on the Maker Mobile, increasing digital equity, supporting critical out-of-school hours, and returning to pre-pandemic hours this spring. Next slide, please. So thank you so much for allowing me to come to this meeting today and present. I would really especially like to thank library staff for their tremendous work and their creativity, our friends at the library for their dedication and advocacy, the city staff and council for your ongoing support, in particular, Councilmember Mike O'Neil, and City Manager Kevin Woodhouse for their work on the Library JPA Governing Board and Operations Committee. And I am happy to answer any questions that anyone has as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephanie. Do we have questions or comments from council? Mike?
Yeah, I also wanted to thank Stephanie. I haven't had a chance to meet her, because everything's via Zoom now, so we haven't zoomed yet. But no, I think we do have a library system that we're, we should be very proud of. The Big Lift is a program that has a commitment that every child will be reading at least at the third grade level, you know, by the time they reach third grade, so that no kid will, you know, be left behind. I think it's also, they stepped up to the plate, and they've continued serving lunches during the pandemic and passed out lunches. I think they're also adapting to the new realities of COVID by starting to offer, they're not, starting to offer Zoom classes in the Makers Square, in the Makers Unions. And if you haven't seen one of the Makers things, definitely go to Brisbane or Half Moon Bay and see what they are doing, okay? Because it's, it's really a whole new way. And if you think the library is like something Alexander the Grant... Because it's, it's really a whole new way. And if you think the library is like something Alexander the Great invented in Alexandria, you're wrong. It has really modified into that they are programs and community centers at this point. I mean, the Airport Roundtable, when we meet in person, meets the library. There's a lot of groups that meet at the library. I mean, there are service groups, AAs, parent groups. And they are filling the gap when the schools are just overwhelmed right now with the, you know, by providing the, so they don't have that loss during the summer of summer, the agrarian calendar we have on schools versus what we have. They, they're there to fill that gap and keep kids interested. So I have to admit, I'm proud of being on the board. And it is one of the boards that I have really enjoyed since I've been on city council and even, even on the school board. So someday, and the Brisbane Library is a destination in downtown Brisbane. The way it, they have a special exhibit that you can see the sculpture at night, which is, brings people downtown to go window shop and everything else. So it has a lot of potential there. So I want to thank you, Stephanie, for being a part of that and managing our two libraries.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, big stick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Stephanie, welcome home.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. I'm very grateful over the course of the last several months, I've had the opportunity to see the Atherton Library as it was being constructed. And of course, visiting Half Moon Bay Library and Brisbane Library and salivating a little bit over what they have and what we could have in Pacifica when we finish putting our mind to it and making it happen. So I'm chomping at the bit to get the library advisory committee going again. And in the meantime, I'm, I'm so excited to begin that process to try and bring to Pacifica this amazing collaborative community space that all these other communities are getting to enjoy, that I think would be a powerful tool for our community when we finally make it happen. And so thank you so much for being here and giving us even the briefest glimpse of what we could have here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Hi, Stephanie. It's good to see you again. Haven't seen you for some time.
It's great to see you, too.
Through library school at the same time. And that was super exciting and, you know, I'm so happy that you're here. It's just like, it's like a, I don't know, Cinderella story or something to, to start. It's like so many of our city employees to work from a very young age in a, and, and to graduate to different levels of responsibility. And here you are. So we're thrilled. I do want to say, and thank you for the extreme support that the libraries, the Sametown County Library provides to our schools. It's something that I've always been very keen on and it's just so necessary because the schools do a great job and we just can't cover, you know, even all the hours that school is open with, with paid staff in our libraries. And so having the services and the additional support from you, having the summer learning program and the materials that you so generously provide, not just for during break times, but, you know, classrooms. If we need books, people, if we need books, and I have availed myself of this for Cabrillo School, we just have to reach out and they supply them for, I mean, to give to us to have for our students. So it's an amazing resource. It just never stops giving. And I know, I'm with you, Tiger. Twenty twenty-two, baby. We are going to be right back on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vidalos.
Thank you for reminding us all of the great things that libraries do. And when people just think, oh, well, people don't read books anymore. It's not about books. It's about everything else. It's about people looking for jobs. It's about connecting with other people. It's about meeting space and makers rooms and this. And it's so much more important than it used to be. So I'm hoping that this is the year for the Pacifica Library. And, and thank you very much for going forward with us.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for being here, Stephanie. It's really nice to meet you. And I'm serious. We can talk about playing that at the Pacifica Collaborative. Maybe we can do a little presentation, just a short one. That'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much. Thank you for having me.
Yeah, it'll be nice to work with you. Thank you.
Bye.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I see that in the attendees list, Bill Glasgow has his hand raised. I don't know if it was for a comment for this item or it was for a different reason.
Oh, was I supposed to ask for public comment? Can.
Um, yeah, it'd probably be a good idea to check in and see what happened.
We can open up public comment?
Madam Mayor, let me try.
Thanks, Josh.
Bill Glasgow, you can now unmute yourself if you'd like to speak. I think he may not be there.
I think you're right. We'll go ahead and close public comment. And if you'd like to add any comments later, we can make sure to get those comments from him. Okay, so we're moving on to the consent calendar. Is there any council member who would like to pull a consent item for deliberation and discussion by council as a whole versus simply asking questions or making a statement? Hey, I see nothing. Sorry, I'm reading my little directions here. I'm still new at this part. Okay, so is there any pub, anybody in the public that would like to discuss an item on the consent calendar with the exception of any item pulled, which there are none, in which case they must be, must raise their hand now? So if you'd like to pull something from the consent calendar, if you could raise your hand and we can open that up. Do you see any hands, Josh?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I see one hand raised by Christine Bowles. Christine, you may now unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Beer, council members and staff. This is Christine Bowles. I have a few questions about consent agenda item three. I'm really glad to see that North County Fire is applying for two-hundred-thousand-dollar grants for vegetation management to prevent wildfires and another hundred thousand for community education. It sounds like a lot of money, but a friend recently told me that the cost to remove one large hazardous tree was about ten thousand dollars. So this funding would only remove twenty trees in total. I, I understand this money is not just to remove trees and this, and this comparison is just for perspective. I've been trying to understand the fire maps in the draft general plan. They are for three weeks now and have reached out to CAL FIRE, North County Fire, and the California Office of Emergency Services. The fire map in the draft general plan is blank inside the city limits. It's, it's really odd because the two thousand fourteen draft general plan fire map showed many areas of high fire risk in Pacifica. Communities near Malaga, Rockaway, Ballymore, Park Pacifica, and Southern Lundamar seem to be at the highest risks and some were labeled with a different overlay term, very high fire hazard severity zones, which seem to be missing and completely in the, in the maps now as well. So I think we really need to fix these maps so we can understand and comment on land use and other proposed changes to the general plan. The current fire in Big Sur and the recent CZU fire shows us that conditions have changed dramatically on our coast in the last few years with climate change-induced droughts. So I have, I have four questions for staff and deputy chief Kavanaugh. He's here tonight. One, are there other potential sources of funding for vegetation management that the city is currently pursuing? Two, how will decisions be made as to where to spend these limited resources? I saw reference to a vegetation management program in the draft DIR, but there were no links and I was not able to find it on the Pacifica or fire department website. And, and I'm not even sure if that document would answer this question or if there's some other process. So that would be good to know. And then it seems like our general plan should start to consider wildland urban interface zones, which overlapped with some of what we're talking about with the vegetation management for parts of Pacifica so that new construction is required to be built to fire-resistant standards that would give residents and firefighters an extra hour to fight fires and evacuate. The draft DIR also mentions that Pacifica and North County Fire have been talking for years about the need to add a third fire station in the middle of town. Is that under consideration as part of our general plan update? That seems important as later this year we'll be planning for eventual nineteen-hundred new units of housing under Reno requirements. So just making sure that we actually have the capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Our next speaker is Mark Cobble. Mark, you may now unmute yourself.
Hi, city council people. Anyways, back in December, I had sent an email to the city council and staff requesting an explanation of reasons why the time period to review and provide comments on the general plan and draft impact report was so tight. I'm still waiting for an acceptable response.
Mayor, this is not oral communication.
Right, that, yeah, I was, thank you very much, Councilmember O'Neill. I, I appreciate that. This was the time where we're asking the community if you'd like to pull an item. So if that's what you would like to do, Mark, then by all means. And if not, then you can save your comment for a public comment period.
Okay, when is the public comment period?
After we make a motion and, and go through the agenda.
Okay, I'll wait for that then.
All right. Sorry, Mark.
That's all right.
Madam Mayor, there's no more hand raises at this time.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mayor.
Yes?
Mayor Beer, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. And I see that deputy chief Kavanaugh from North County Fire Authority is also on. We, we're happy to respond to the question related to the process that we undertake for how any received grant funds would be prioritized for a project. I believe the questions and comments from Ms. Bowles, except for that one, didn't relate to this consent calendar item. They related more to the planned Pacifica documents that are out for review. So staff is not prepared to respond to those and indeed she's submitted comments similar to that already on those documents. But if deputy chief Kavanaugh would want to speak to, you know, maybe, maybe we can back up and say the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we applied for, actually last year applied for a million dollars in funding resources only received a certain amount. And then the process that we go through in prioritizing how, for example, the chipping program worked and was spread around town to, to treat, you know, areas that North County Fire determines are the most priority. And I'll turn it over to deputy chief Kavanaugh to do that.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. Yeah, so how the grants work is we applied for this grant that's on here now is the, the climate CCI grant with CAL FIRE. We applied for this grant last year as well. It was denied. Not only one, Pacifica was also denied over in Brisbane when we applied for this grant. There are multiple grants replying. Why it's on here is because when we, we get approval with the, through the city council, it helps in the process. We also applied for a coastal commission conservancy grant that we, excuse me, were awarded last year that we used for the chipping program. We're applying for that again as well this year for two thousand twenty-two. So those are the two grants that we're looking at applying for this year and how we use those funds. If there's any questions I can, from the council, I can, I can speak to those.
Are there any questions from council? Thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate your, your popping in and answering questions for our.
Yes, and I would like to say, I think that for, for what we're trying to do down in Pacifica alone, down there with the grants, I think it was very successful. We had with the chipping program we did last summer. We're hoping to be successful in that grant application once again for coastal conservancy. This, this grant here, the CCI grant that we're doing, it's, it's a lot bigger grant. It's, there's a lot more people statewide they're applying for. They look at those very serious severity zones and, and fire, the, the communities that are, have a lot of histories. So that takes in part of it. Really for denied us, want to reconfirm for everybody and Ms. Bowles as well, why we put these on the consents into the council because it helps in the process when we, when we put the, the grants through.
Okay, thank you so much. I do see there are some questions for you. Tiger, you had your hand up first.
I did. And thank you for being here today, deputy chief Kavanaugh. I actually got to enjoy a presentation by Ryan, Ryan Adams the other week at Emergency Preparedness. And he was talking about how a hundred and thirty thousand dollars went into the chipping program. And while I don't know much about the cost of bringing the trees down, I know that with a hundred and thirty thousand, that was able to make it so that that chipper could go around to many neighborhoods. And apparently twenty-eight loads were taken away. And while Mr. Adams didn't have the exact number by weight, the conservative estimate he gave was that each of those loads was no less than a ton of chipped material from all of those, everything that was cleared out. So the idea being that house clears out their, their material that's combustible, brings it to the curb and it gets chipped. So a hundred and thirty grand seemed to go a long way. And if you want to comment in greater detail about any of those programs, that, that might help a little. But I want to thank you for being here also.
Yeah, and once again, that grant that we had last year, we're going to, we still have.
You don't look like you're muted, but I can't hear you.
Can you guys hear me now?
I can hear you.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, just, I would like to say, so that, that the coastal conservancy grant, we still have funds left over that we're going to use again and finish out the funds that we got permission through coastal conservancy once again this spring. And then hopefully we will be awarded again that coastal conservancy grant or the CCI grant that we're, we're showing here. And one thing I think for the public and the council know, these grants, how we have, how, when we get a grant, it's very specific in how we have to use them. They, we have to go through the, the people, the folks that award the grants, if it's the state, whoever it is. There's very specific details of how we have to use those money, use those monies for the projects that we do. And so it's just not that we get awarded a hundred thousand dollars and go do what we want with it. That's not, that's not how the grants work. It's, there's very specific items and functions that we have to do with those grants.
Thank you. Councilmember Vidalos.
And do you use that grant money in areas that you deem are higher fire hazard zones? Is that how you pick the areas that you use?
Yeah, we, we looked at, we looked at, like, for the chipping program. If you looked at the maps that we, that we submitted through the coastal conservancy area, it was basically the horseshoe around Pacifica to the, to the east, to the, to the north and to the south. We, we, those are the areas we worked on in the chipping program. We're going to continue to try to, to do that again this spring. And then we'll look at those maps once again. We're going to pick those areas that we think is going to have the most benefit to not only to the residents, but also working to clear the vegetation and so forth around the, the city.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you so much. We appreciate you being here very much. Okay, does council have any statements or questions about any of the consent items? I actually do. I have one, just one statement I'd like to make on number four, if I could. I just wanted to, to make sure that the Chit Chat Cafe is getting plenty of information about when the pier is going to be closed and as early as possible because it's been affecting their business. So I really wanted to just get that into the record and maybe, I know it probably doesn't belong in a, and what they're talking about tonight, the lease agreement, but I did want to make sure we, we heard it and it was on the record. So. Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Um, thank you for mentioning that. I thought about the same thing and I actually think it is germane to the item tonight. And it is covered in the lease. I know, and perhaps city manager can comment on that in turn. Because we did, we've definitely had periods where the, the pier needs to be closed for a reason, whether it be surf, whether it be, you know, unsafe, unsafe conditions. And when we had the whole section where we had to close it off, so that could be answered if we want. Uh, when we had the whole section where we had to close it off, so that could be answered if we want to um discuss that. Um, I just have a really little thing that, but I did want to, it's also a City Manager thing, um, to just check in really quickly on the minutes uh in regard, it's on packet page fifteen. It's the second to last paragraph, and it was when Councilmember O'Neill was speaking last, last time about, we were talking about the um hopeful solar uh system for the community center. And he was referring to rebar and concrete and being able to see rebar through concrete. And the statement that Kevin, uh, Mr., Mr. Woodhouse was referring to is, um, I think he was saying failing, concrete failing, but it says falling. And I realize I am not nitpicking the minutes like they're not done right. And the, the process by which we do this is very labor intensive. And I just wanted to clarify um for the record if that's what was stated or what was intended by that statement on, on packet page fifteen.
Hi, Ken.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Beckmeyer. I, I'm not looking directly at the minutes right now, but I, what I recall saying is when uh, and, and Public Works Director Peterson, correct me if I'm wrong, but when there's, when there's metal showing through concrete like that, it's called spauling. So uh, it's not falling or failure. It should, it should say spauling, S P A U L I N G, or uh, I'm not sure if it's spauling or spauling with a V in there, but one of those two is the, is the correct term.
And Kevin, can you comment at all on the lease agreement and giving them proper notice?
So can, can you repeat the question? I, or maybe, what I, what I understood is, is the question about, we have sort of a graduated uh, uh, charge or, or, you know, rent correction provisions in the lease for when access to the chit chat is hampered by pier closures or storms or otherwise. I mean, sometimes the pier is closed, but chit chat is still available. So there's a multi um level structure in the pier lease that handles that. And Director Perez has uh handled the negotiations with chit chat owners, and he can speak more specifically to it if necessary.
Hey, Mike's here.
Good evening, Council. Um, I would reiterate what City Manager Woodhouse said. And um, but maybe to the mayor's first sort of comment, um, we typically don't have a bunch of uh time before the piers close. So um, if there is a planned, you know, work that's going to happen, and, and I believe there will be some happening, we will definitely have a lot of notice. But typically, the timing for that is not something that um staff has had a lot of control over. And part of our um negotiations included meeting with um, uh, Paul Averini, our Field Services Manager, and myself, along with um, uh, the owner of the Chit Chat to discuss uh some of the notification and various things like that. So it is covered in there. And we did go back and look at um, in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, or I'm sorry, it was twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, last year, when the, the pier was closed for a long period of time, and we made adjustments for that.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Beckmeyer. Is that okay with you? Okay, so do we have a motion?
I move the approval of the consent, consent calendar, consent agenda.
Second.
Do I have a vote?
And I have a motion by Councilmember uh Beckmeyer uh for, to approve the consent calendar with uh item number two as amended, and a second by Councilmember Vatterlos. I'll call the roll calls, vote starting with Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatterlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill. Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Big Stick.
Yes.
Mayor Beer.
Yes.
And a consent calendar with item number two as amended passes unanimously.
Okay, so if we could open up public comment for folks who wanted to comment on the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, I think you already opened that for the consent calendar. That is when Christine Bowles spoke.
But then we stopped Mr. Hubbell in the middle.
So now.
He was speaking on oral communication.
Oral comments, okay.
Yeah, now it's oral communication.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for your help, Mike. I appreciate it. I'll get there, everyone. Okay, oral communications. Do we have any hands up?
Yes, Mayor Beer, we have a couple of hands being raised at this time, so I'll first unmute Stenick Dan. Dan, you may now unmute yourself.
Good evening, council members. Can you hear me? My name is Diane Stegic. I just want to bring attention to the fact that um, you can't pull, you can't refuse to can, pull a consent item and then have six people discuss it with speakers and public comment not included when it's out of order. If there's going to be any debate, substantive debate on the topic, it has to be pulled off the consent counter. I mean, this is a huge violation of Roberts rules. I mean, this reminds me of your February twentieth meeting uh State of the City where, where Kevin Woodhouse and Sue Beckmeyer led a uh, a discussion by a super majority of council members, and Mayor O'Neill solicited attendees for ideas related to new taxes last year. I mean, these are, these are clear Brown Act violations, period. When people request to pull consent items in writing off the consent calendar, they have to be pulled if you're going to discuss them. You can't have six people, six, you can't have five speakers, five council members debate a consent item without pulling it off the consent calendar. I mean, this is one-on-one. Anybody could just have these decisions reversed if they cared. They're pretty simple, but please. Um, when people want things pulled off the consent calendar, you gotta pull them off the consent counter. It's not legal. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Our next speaker is Jim Kramer, followed by Nancy Tier. Nancy, um, Jim, you may now unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Jim Kramer, I live in Sharp Park. Good evening, everybody. I am sorry to continue to flog this dead horse, but I refuse to believe that no one in this city is willing to address this. The city told us last week that our comments on the D E I R are highest priority because only they will be responded to by law, must be responded to by law. So I switched from working on the general plan to tackle the E I R. Have you tried to study the E I R draft document yourself yet? You probably know that it's over a thousand pages without a table of contents and no list of figures or tables. But do you know that the E I R file has another serious problem? And it's only true for the E I R, not the other documents. The text cannot be searched. I ask you to try this simple test. Go to the start of the executive summary, page E one, right after the pretty color, color cover. Pick some word in the first paragraph of normal text. I used sequo, which is clearly visible near the end of the paragraph. Then try to search or find that word, type sequo in the search box. Your search may find some hits for your word, but notice that it misses the one that you can see with your own eyes right there in the first paragraph. Now, search for the word executive from the heading executive summary. That's the first line on page E one. And that works. It turns out that words that are in headings and tables are rendered properly in the file. But the normal text paragraphs where most of the explanation occurs cannot be searched. So does that matter? You can't find word, you can't find where a word or phrase appears in normal text. You can't highlight or copy and paste phrases in your review work if you're taking notes. Let me offer one specific example of how serious this is. Each of the, let's see, much of the executive summary of the E I R is lengthy tables listing impacts and the policies that will help reduce the damage. Say you read in one of the tables that policy S A dash I dash ninety-four in the safety element called Development Review states that proposals will have to ensure the mitigation measures. Well, that sounds interesting, but it's rather vague. So now you want to read more about how this would work. So you search for S A dash one dash ninety-four. You get four hits, but they're all there in the summary tables, no others in the next seven hundred and pages of the document. But of course, it is there. On page seven eighty-three and section three point one four wildfire, under proposed general plan policies that reduce the impact, there are two pages of discussion on this issue with specific mention of that exact policy, but you missed it. Do you appreciate how frustrating and near impossible it is to attempt to discern the rationale of the policies put forth in the D E I R? I urge you to fix this.
Thank you, Jim. Our next speaker is Nancy, followed by Suzanne Moore. Nancy, you may now unmute yourself.
Uh, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Nancy Tierney, and I live in the Lower Manor District. I'd like to speak on the process for reviewing the recently released draft general plan update, the draft environmental impact report, and the Sharp Park specific plan. Over the past couple of weeks, I've read much of the general plan and parts of the draft E I R and the Sharp Park plan. On Thursday, January twentieth, I attended the program History of Pacifica Open Space, hosted by the Pacifica Environmental Family. The organizers provided an amazing history of proposed developments since the early nineteen sixties, up and down the coast and on the hillsides. The projects featured housing, a marina, a convention center, and two major roadways, the three eighty connector and the Highway One Tunnel. The numerous citizen initiatives to stop these ill-conceived projects, in some cases bolstered by federal support, were impressive. Love of the natural Pacifica environment drove all these efforts. The takeaway message is that our plans should reflect community priorities and respect our environment. On Saturday, January twenty-second, I attended a workshop to review the City of San Mateo general plan. The current focus is on evaluating three land use and circulation alternatives. The workshop addressed the differences in the alternative scenarios and answered participant questions. A second work, workshop is scheduled January twenty-seventh. Our two cities are very different, but there is much to be learned from their process. All documents can be found on an easy-to-navigate website called StriveSanMateo.org. Taking a similar approach, it would be helpful for Pacificans to be able to discuss the options presented in the draft E I R, a single city center or several town centers, in the end reflecting Pacifica's history and geography. I encourage the council and staff to pursue more rigorous public engagement in these plans, drawing on the models I mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Our next speaker is Suzanne Moore, followed by Lynn Adams. Suzanne, you may now unmute yourself.
Thank you, Suzanne Moore from the Manor. And um, oh gosh, Jim and Nancy said it much better. Uh, but I've dutifully been trying to complete my homework assignment and review the general plan and draft environmental impact. And like others in the community, I've really struggled scrolling through hundreds of pages, trying to cut and paste, uh, just not doing this very well. But I understand it is possible to create an interactive table of contents and allow for a cut-and-paste function. It would really help to better evaluate these important city documents and, and to get um all of us better involved. So please make improvements, and may I ask for a homework extension um of the deadline for our public feedback, and please continue efforts to outreach to Pacifica residents um who do not have computer access. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Our next speaker is Lynn Adams, followed by Bijan. Lynn, you may now unmute yourself.
Hi, thank you, uh, council. Um, uh, and hello, everyone. It's been a while since I've been able to give you any P B C updates, but I did want to share um, and, and thank the public for such an amazing outpouring of volunteerism over, since COVID through twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. I wanted to report that um all total volunteers registered eighteen hundred and seven, eighteen thousand seven hundred and sixty volunteers picked up almost seventy-five thousand pounds since uh January of twenty twenty. They completed fifty-one hundred and ninety-three volunteer events and removed four hundred and fifty-three thousand cigarette butts and planted over three thousand uh native plants. Um, in addition, in Pacifica alone, the Street to Beach program had twelve hundred cleanups throughout our, um, our city and, and Muscle Rock as well. And the cleanups went from the street, um, from the hill, uh, Skyline Drive, all the way out to the ocean. And we were very blessed to have people covering over three hundred and twenty-five miles of trail that were logged, that were logged. And a lot of people are cleaning up and not logging up. So um, I also wanted to say that um, the Beach Coalition has been very, very engaged in trying to um handle all the excess litter that's been left behind on our beaches and in our streets from COVID. And we formed three new programs, one's called the Street to Beach, which I spoke about, inviting people to clean up anywhere, anytime, and log the work. Another one is the Junior Albatross, which is probably going to change to the Junior Mission Blue Crew, which is uh youth that are doing cleanups and doing youth activities and learning to be leaders and serving as junior site captains. And also a program, um, we call the Community Service Program, where youth can do cleanups anywhere, anytime, and log their time and, and their mileage through the Clean Swell app and get community service hours validated for their schools. So I wanted to share that with the public so that if anybody has any youth, we're recruiting now for the new Mission Blue, Junior Mission Blue Crew, uh, new junior site captains. We have a whole team of people that are graduating, going off. So if you have any youth, um, eighth grade or up that might want to be junior site captains, we invite them. And uh, thank you, council, for your support for, for our sponsorship last year. And um, we look forward to continuing the work and keeping Pacifica clean. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Our next speaker is Bijan, followed by Summer Lee. Bijan, you may now unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, wonderful, wonderful. First timer to come and provide comments, so. Hello, uh, Mayor Beer and the City Council. If you recall, I came in front of you in early August requesting planning approval of Lot Three in Olani. It was a great evening with significant enthusiasm for me and my family. Thanks to the council, we got the approval. We even got the support of the community. We were ready to start the process with the building department and then start the construction. But this approval and the enthusiasm of me and my family and the community weren't good enough for the planning. Kristin Murdoch. It has been six months since that approval. I have contacted the planning department multiple times, but no reasonable responses. Tina Wearsair says we are busy. I bought this land in an approved development in twenty sixteen, six years ago. I have spent over two hundred thousand dollars in taxes and fees. I spend significant personal time going through the planning process and meeting ever-changing requirements. It is sad and demoralizing process. There is no sense of helping the community and finding solution. Instead, it's a culture of finding obstacle. I want to bring this to your attention because without your commitment to changing the culture, it is a lose-lose situation for the current and future residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Summer Lee, followed by Mark Hubbell. Summer, you may now unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. Uh, actually, first, as part of what Bijan just said, I was um part of that appeal um to you guys last summer, and I do want to support Bijan's concerns because he did everything right, and he reached and worked very hard with us to find an agreement, which cost him a lot of money and time. But he heard us and he um changed his plans. And I thought we came to a great win-win. And so I'm disappointed that he's upset that he's been unable to move forward because of delays by the city, which I think we all know caused the city in future income also. On a different note, I'm also hearing voices from the community who are finding the D E I R and the draft general plan unworkable to read, just things like no link table contents and somehow a format that's not completely searchable and without the ability to cut and paste. And it's, the E I R itself is a thousand pages long. And I haven't gotten through it all. I don't know who has yet. But even just in the few pages of the general plan, I see basic errors like two of the five city council members here tonight, your names are spelled wrong. So I support the growing community request to fix up these drafts and restart the comment period. And I would love some clarification also about how this process works. Would some of these big errors or smaller errors and omissions be edited before the planning commission hearing or before council hearing? And just some clarification so that we can provide input in the best way possible. Thank you much.
Thank you, Summer. Our next speaker is Mark Hubble followed by Christine Bowles. Mark, you may now meet yourself.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. The time I've spent reviewing the D I E R has been very difficult struggle for a whole host of reasons. The main reason, in my opinion, is that without having any opportunity, having had any opportunity for participation or even exposure to the creation of this document, its ideas, information sources and goals, familiarity with each aspect is vastly more difficult and frustrating and time-consuming. And a situation that is extremely frustrating and unproductive. While doing my research for this project, I was reminded in that the city had initiated a robust reach-out program in two thousand and fourteen. Many cities encourage this participation and take great pride in the results. Why were these ideals abandoned by Pacifica in twenty twenty-one? The difficulty has been magnified by the dysfunctional search and indexing tools which others have spoke about, tools that are commonly up to professional standards sadly are barely usable at best. We as citizens who want to be involved in the future of our city are excluded at every opportunity for no fault of our own. I believe the best way to restore trust and confidence in the administration of our city is to shut down this dysfunctional process. The document should be brought up to twenty-first century standards and the forty-day review period restarted once the documents have been properly distributed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Our next speaker is Christine Bowles followed by Jose Luis. Christine, you may now meet yourself.
Good evening, council and staff. This is Christine Bowles. I want to start by echoing the concerns of the other speakers in terms of the issues with the general plan and E I R. I can't tell you how many hours I've wasted scrolling and scrolling trying to find the right section of the E I R. And can I also, can I please get an answer from staff? No one is answering my, my emails to try to understand what the process looks like for fixing major errors like the missing fire maps that affect our ability to analyze other sections of the general plan. I can't look at land use without knowing what our fire and other risks are. So, so when will the documents be fixed? Will they be recirculated for another forty-five day period? It's, it's not just residents, but the state agencies are going to have trouble reviewing the documents with these errors and inconsistencies as well. So please, I encourage you to actually answer our questions tonight and so that we don't keep wasting our time. Tonight, I mostly want to speak again in support of Bijan Kozrabi, the owner of Harmony One Lot Three. As you know from our appeal hearing last August, the planning department missed key information about hillside preservation, prominent ridge lines, and lead requirements in their review of the project. These errors led to an appeal process and a redesign of the home. We worked very hard with Bijan for months to bring a revised project to you that met the original conditions of approval for the subdivision. You approved the project on August ninth and Bijan submitted his construction drawings for building permit two weeks later. The project seems to have stalled in the planning department since then. I understand that planning must sign off on the project before a building permit is granted and that Mr. Burnock is very busy with other priorities, but that is no reason to hold up the building department review for five months. These things usually happen concurrently in other cities. Bijan is losing a lot of money with these delays and meanwhile, construction costs continue to rise. This lost time is also not in Pacifica's interest as it delays important property tax income when construction is finished. My guess is the home will be worth at least eight million when it's finished because it's beautiful and we want it to get built. So that would mean almost ninety thousand dollars a year in, in lost property tax revenue just for this one home. Planning fees and staff time are paid for by the project. If Pacifica doesn't have staff capacity to handle the workload, then other employees can easily be brought in to help. I know we've recently hired junior staff, but it seems the senior staff is also overburdened, especially given the continued work that we know now is needed on the general plan and E I R. It is not in anyone's financial interest to not be able to provide essential planning services in a timely manner, and it also adds to Pacifica's already poor reputation as being a difficult place to build. It's time to change that. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Our next speaker is Jose Luis followed by Pete Schumaker. Jose, you may now meet yourself.
Good night, Mayor, council members and staff. I want to start off by saying thank you for all the work that y'all have done this past year and I've followed y'all for a while and I'm finally trying to say something. I want to bring awareness to our flags. After our windy last year, we could really retire those. They're the ones by the pier, right in front of the city building. I say new flags, new year. And since some days are starting to get really pretty, we're having a lot more people coming over and visiting us. I say let's put a big old smile and retire those flags. They worked, they done their service, and now it's kind of time to get new ones. With that being said, thank you very much. Back to you.
Thank you, Jose. Our next speaker is Pete Schumaker followed by Jesse Thomas. Pete, you may now meet yourself.
Hello there, Pete Schumaker here. I'm one of the people who have, have pointed out the flaws of the general plan and saying that it's how daunting it is to try to review a thousand-page document, but the fact that it's a thousand-page, it's a thousand-page document on the E I R. There's a flip side of that. It's a tremendous amount of work. I mean, really, a thousand pages. And if you look at it, it's well-written, it's got details. It's, it's a lot of staff work. And I know staff has probably felt kind of blindsided by the fact that they're getting mostly negative feedback, but that's the problem because it's not the problem, it's a problem of the document. I think it's a problem of the rollout, the process. It's clearly been rushed very frantically, and that's not in anybody's best interest. So we want a plan that's going to be good, not just for the review period, but for the next twenty, thirty years. If there's, if it's confusing, if people cannot access it down the road, it could lead to confusion, which is going to generate more emails and wasted time and possible lawsuits. So we all want to get it together. Pacifica has a group of citizens who have been looking at plans and E I Rs for thirty, forty years, helping the city. A tremendous amount of expertise, some of the people who spoke here. We're all donating a lot of our time. We, if we could just really work together, I would love nothing more than maybe in a couple of months from now or three months from now to say to the staff department, that's a fantastic document. Thank you for putting it together. I would love that and everybody would too. And if we, if you allow us to help you and not see us as opposition, we are digging this through this thing and getting it cleaned up. We're making suggestions on how to organize it. We're putting in hours of our time to do so. So we're on your side. And please, the goodwill that's been built up over the past couple of years with the transparency in government, with the connect Pacifica and all that, a lot of that's been undermined by the way this has been rolled out. Quite frankly, it feels like you're trying to rush it through and that creates tremendous amount of suspicion, like there's something to hide. You know, when people do that, if they have a document that they're really proud of, if I do, I want people to look at it. I'm saying, here, appreciate my work. I'll give you time to look at it. Please, if you have that attitude, we can appreciate the work you've done and staff has done a tremendous amount of work here. So please, we got to work together. We will help you as best we can to get a fabulous document that will be in the best interests of our city and will lower your stress and make your jobs easier. That's what we want. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Our next speaker is Jesse Thomas followed by Peter Loeb. Jesse, you may now meet yourself.
Hello, my name is Jesse Thomas and I work at Fog Zone Smoke Shop in Pedro Point. Forgive me, this is my first time doing this over Zoom and I just want to make sure if this is the time to bring up Agenda Nine or closer to, okay, I'm getting.
Yeah, it is not, it is not, but we will let you know when we're on that item.
Okay, thank you so much. I just wanted to.
Thank you, Jesse. Our next speaker is Peter Loeb followed by Marge Davis. Peter, you may now meet yourself.
Good evening, this is Peter Loeb. I, I'll be brief. The, the draft E I R needs to be fixed. It needs a table of contents and it needs to be searchable, the text searchable. It would also be wonderful if the general plan draft had an interactive table of content so you could click on the, on the chapter and it would take you to the page. Ideally, I would love it if there was a redline version of the draft general plan or some way of comparing with the twenty fourteen draft so we could figure out if, if anything is different, what changes were made, what additions, what deletions, what, what rephrasing, whatever. Right now, there are people who are looking at the twenty fourteen draft and the, and the current draft and trying to figure out what, what's different between them, maybe nothing. But it's a lot of work. It would be really helpful if there was some kind of redline version or some way, something from the city that says these are the, these are the significant changes between the two drafts, whatever. I also support Bijan's struggle to build his home. He, he, he worked in good faith with a number of people so that everybody got to a project that they all supported and it, it's really terrible that he, he, he's not able to do his project. He has all the drawings ready to go. I support him in his struggles. Oh, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Peter. And I have one more hand raised by Marge Davis. Marge, you may now meet yourself.
Thank you. My comments tonight are also going to be about the draft general plan and the draft D I R, kind of a thirty-thousand-foot view because I haven't had a lot of time to review it myself, but I have a lot of input from other members of the public. And I know this was mentioned already and it might seem like a small thing, but yes, three out of the five names of our city's leadership team are misspelled on our guiding document. And why is this important, you ask? To quote a dear friend of mine, it's critically, critically important to be accurate. And to quote the New York Times, getting people's names right is one of the most basic tasks of reporting and editing. As they go on to say, every time we get a name wrong, we chip away at the Times' credibility in the eyes of the reader. So credibility, let's look at the implications and perceptions of people reading what is essentially a flawed document based on the issues in these documents. As a reader reviews a document that appears to not to have been carefully proofread and edited, is poorly formatted, hard to navigate, unorganized, contains errors and omissions, is factually incorrect and uses outdated data, one begins to doubt the credibility, competence, transparency and/or experience of the writers and developers. Although these are called drafts and we're in the public comment period for them, the intent of the public comment period is not for the public to proofread and edit the documents. It is for the public to review them and make substantive, substantive comments and provide input that may be critical to the intent, efficacy, accuracy, and completeness of the document. Let's take the time to end with documents that are factually accurate and up to date, properly organized and formatted for ease of navigation and reference. I suspect we will want to refer to them many times over the next ten to twenty years and are free of errors and inconsistencies. It's a far more efficient use of time, resources and finances to get it right now than to revisit it through litigation, appeals and citizen complaint. I'm asking the city to withdraw these drafts, have them properly proofread and edited, brought up to professional standards and resubmitted to the public, thus resetting, resetting the forty-five day review period. For a public review period on documents such as these, it should not appear that they are meant to confuse, obfuscate, confound and frustrate to the point where people just walk away because they're unable to participate in the smooth-flowing process. I recognize the amount of work and effort that went into these documents and I truly appreciate the effort of staff and council to make them available to us. But I urge you to withdraw these and then resubmit once they've been properly proofread and corrected. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Marge. Madam Mayor, I do not see any more hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thanks for everybody for your comments. We're going to now move on to council communications. Who would like to start? Mayor Proton Bake Stick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you'd be willing to make me a slight allowance because I actually did quite a lot over the last couple of weeks that I'd like to report out on in I hope a timely fashion, but I'd also kind of like to respond to a lot of what we just heard because I think it's important and it should be responded to. May I have a few extra minutes?
Yes.
Thank you. So I share a lot of the community's concerns and I want to start there. And as I've been trying to think about this, you know, some of the feedback we get is it seems like city staff is trying to like undermine the process and I don't think that's the case, first of all. That being said, it definitely feels to me like half a step was missed somewhere and I keep trying to put my finger on where. And I'm going to go straight to taking personal responsibility because it, it seems to me, at least in my zeal for wanting to get the general plan through, I joined in saying, well, let's, let's get it done this year. Let's put on the, the yearly plan, which I think is absolutely the right thing to do. I think we did the right thing. I think what I didn't understand as I was participating in that conversation was that we were trying to get it done as quickly as possible, in the best way possible. And I think that for me, I should have taken more of a role in asking what the rollout would look like. And you know, when I look at the first page of the general plan document and it's my name that's not spelled right, I think that that's not because somebody isn't good at their job. I think it's because there was a heck of a lot of work to do and that we were asking them to do it in a quick manner. And I think that they, we have the exactly what we requested, which was an extraordinary amount of work done and prepared for us. I don't care if my name is spelled right, by the way, that, that's not my concern. My concern is the experience we're all having as a community right now. That's my concern. And forgive me because I'm trying to navigate this in my own head. But I, I feel like we have what we asked for, which is all this documentation and it's a lot of documentation. I know that staff is going to speak later that they're doing everything they can to make these documents more user-friendly, first of all. We're hearing you. We're talking to our staff. We're talking to your staff. That's another part of this that's frustrating is in our role, we're talking to staff and you're not hearing the conversations we're having with staff. We're listening to you. We're talking to them. They're talking to us. We're talking to you. And because it's such a large conversation, we do it in this intermediary fashion. And then it's like, I'm trying to serve you and work with staff who are exceptional. And I imagine some of my fellow council members are having a similar experience. And it's frustrating because I can't just like show you the conversations we're all having. So like everything in government, this is going to be a long process as quickly as we want it done. I made comments last time that I don't think I can sit through another year of like, where's the general plan? Where's the general plan? And I, I stand by that because for me, that's, that's when I hear that, it feels like it needs to be done. And that being said, now that we have all these documents there, they all are. And again, staff is working on making them more user-friendly. They're going to talk about that later. Now that we have all that documentation, I think my request to my fellow council people, to the community and ultimately to staff is maybe we can figure out. maybe we can figure out from where we're at right here, how to breathe into this. I don't think we need to go back and um, and start over. I think that we haven't seen what feedback is coming in from the community about the E I R yet. And as we get closer to the deadline, that's the time to decide if an extension is appropriate. You know, we hear you, that's difficult to read. We haven't necessarily heard you, what about the I R you don't like specifically, except for the difficulty. And between the two, as we get closer to that deadline, that's when we as a council need to have that conversation, whether or not an extension is appropriate, I think. The only other thing about this process I want to say, because as I'm looking at the documentation page, it's showing that um, that comments are requested to be made on the general plan, the Sharp Park specific plan by the twenty-first of uh February, along with the I Rs. And I think that that's not quite right. Because I think that the comment period for the general plan, Sharp Park specific plan, independent of the I Rs, is closer to like May, when we're gonna have the planning commission hearings on those. And maybe even June, when we have the council, council hearings on those. So I'm inviting everybody in this community right now just to take one deep breath. Let's figure it out together. We're all trying to. If you don't hear it loudly, I apologize. We're trying to. General plan, Sharp Park specific plan, past the E I R, lots of time to comment, lots and lots of time to comment. And as we get closer to that deadline on the I R, we'll figure out if an extension is appropriate. I wanted to start there. I've already taken six minutes. Would you allow me to talk about what I've done over the last two weeks, or should I just shut up at this point?
You can just go through it real quick.
Yes, ma'am. Um, so I wanted to remind everyone covidtests.gov, that's tests with an S, plural, covidtests.gov. Um, you can order four free covid tests right now through the mail system. I have ordered mine and it says it'll come in about two weeks, so I'm looking forward to that. P R C meeting, uh, James Crowe, who's going to be the president of Fog Fest this year was present. Um, went to the Pacifica Daily City Democrats Meeting. Josh Becker spoke, that was great. Went to the um ribbon cutting for Elevate Healing on Palmetto afterward, as they're entering into the next stage of their business. If you're into holistic medicine, um, they're doing great work down there. Check them out. Peninsula Clean Energy held a special meeting before uh, the California Community Power Meeting that is determining whether or not essentially we're um cooperating with a lot of the other what are called C C As, which are community choice aggregations to purchase essentially a really big battery in Kern County so that we have a place to store all of our clean energy. Emergency preparedness, I talked about the vegetation management update that Ryan Adams gave. Uh, I went to a Samhain Labor Council Food Distribution in Millbrae and um got to distribute food with Josh Becker's staff. That was a fabulous time. I went down to Foster City to look at how they're progressing with their seawall project. It's impressive, the work they're doing down there. Um, this afternoon uh with council member Beckmeyer, we got a fabulous tour of the stormwater drainage infrastructure, the pump stations, learned more about the master plan update that's underway. Um, and thank you to Louis Ray, Brian and Lisa for giving us that fabulous tour, after which I attended the One Shoreline um online meeting and at lunch at Kenny's. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiger. Who's next? Sue Battleos, and then Mike.
Okay, um, I went to a meeting called Smart Coast, California, which is encompassing all of the coastal towns and learned about a new type of reef balls, which they're placing out. They are really interesting because they become living reefs. They have holes in them and therefore they have growth and, and not only can they uh develop plant life, but also marine life live in them and are protected. And it was a really interesting, really interesting um proposal. Um, I went to the Fairmont Homeowners. Their concerns were about the uh field that S I owns. And I understand that now that whole building has been demolished. I saw a picture. I haven't been up to look at it. Um, and also um current street paving. The uh Samhain County Legislative Meeting, um, that was a really intense meeting about everything that the county has done during all of this time with covid. And they explained about the testing, about all the other items of the food programs and everything they've done during covid and it's not over. Um, I went to the City and County Association of Governments Legislative Meeting, and I mentioned this before, but they had left off um various places like Highway One and Skyline Thirty-Five. And so now they've added all peninsula interchange and highways. So that's a good thing. Um, I went to the City and County Association of Governments Regular Meeting. We are getting closer and closer on the managed lanes and there were presentations on the end of managed lanes. And I drove on one oh one, I don't know, yesterday, the day before, and the streets are coming along. It's finally easy to drive on one oh one. And we did a school, a walk to school um presentations and drainage programs, et cetera. I did also attend the Samhain Flood and Sea Level Rise One Shoreline Meeting, which was actually fairly short. And they talked about some new projects they're gonna work on. Um, the recovery coordination meeting for the county. They, they gave a lot of numbers because um they're talking about the testing and we do have testing in Pacifica on Sunday um on Francisco and please call ahead to get an appointment to do that. Uh, I went to the Democrats with Josh Becker. And I'm, thanks to Tiger, I met one of his interns aides assistance later. Chief of Staff, sorry. At the ribbon cutting for Elevate. Let's see, the Samhain, I also attended the Samhain County Office of Emergency Services um Council and as I always harp on people to please sign up for S M C alerts, it's so important. We're going to a different system where everything will be consistent. And um, but the county is actually happy to have countywide ten percent participation, which I think is dismal. I believe that in Pacifica we have twenty percent, which is still bad. They think that's really high. And I asked if we could do that as an opt-out instead of people having to opt-in. They said they do have a program that is opt-out with landlines and I just think landlines don't work. So I'm hoping that with this new program, they can um try to do opt-out because I'll keep harping on that too. Um, so that everybody gets the alerts. And they also talked about Zone Haven and Zone Haven um is working really well with Waze. And if there are evacuations, check what your tentative evacuation route would be. Know what your zone is. Also, someone asked the question about, what if I don't know my zone and I need to evacuate? It's not a big deal. Try to know your zone, but if you don't know it, it'll tell you what streets and give you all the information on the, on the zones so that in case of an emergency, you will know how to evacuate. That is just a great program. So um, I'm sure I have more things, but I'm going to stop. Thank you.
Because you go to every single meeting. You really do. Thanks for that.
Uh, I went to uh ten additional meetings that I didn't talk about, so it was a week or two.
Councilwoman Broneal.
Hello, everybody. Um, I, let's see, right off the bat, um, I was there as with Sue Beckmeyer at the Economic Development Committee Meeting. And we heard a um presentation by John Hutar, who's the executive director of the Samhain County Convention Visitors Bureau. And he had a real interesting presentation in terms of where we were, where we were at, where they hoped to be, and some interesting tidbits on um visitors in Samhain County and what they're, what they do there. I'm also in the process of arranging um the Holiday Inn remodel, did not have any sort of um room for like, let's say they have a business conference. There's no big room for a business conference. So I am putting together a tour to show, at this point, it's up to seven or eight people, places to have meetings in Pacifica. Um, so I'm gonna see if I can borrow a van or something from a school district. Um, so that's gonna be interesting to do. I also did a, I attended on Friday, the fourteenth, there was a a climate meeting. We had gotten um code red. We had gotten um several emails about. I attended that. And there was an idea there that I actually um talked to council member um Big Stick about um approaching P C E about a potential way we could, you know, facilitate that and a partnership that happens. So we'll have to see what happens with that. Um, I also, in my job, um, attended uh, got a tour of the carpenters apprenticeship training facility they just built in Pleasanton. And it was really rather interesting is that, you know, everybody sees a carpenter and they think of a hammer, right, and a nail, and that's it. But they actually have sixteen different professions that fall under the carpenters' union, drywall and everything. But the most interesting, uh, one I thought was, yeah, when Tiger went to Foster City to look at their seawall, the carpenters are the ones that drive the piles for the seawalls. They also train all the divers for any underwater work is done through the carpenters' union. In addition to the framing and everything, welding, everything like that. So I thought that was kind of interesting. Um, I chair, I'm chair of LAFCO, so I was chaired the LAFCO meeting and working the.
You muted, Mike.
My computer keeps going blank and you guys all went black on me and then all of a sudden you popped up again and I'm muted. So I'll take the hint, Mary, um, and not talk anymore.
No hints coming your way. Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Yes, so I'll keep it brief. Um, I did want to acknowledge that I also did attend the Democrats Meeting and with um Senator Becker, which is a very, always a wonderful experience. We're so fortunate to have these close working relationships with the elected officials that represent us. They're getting to know more and more about Pacifica and our needs and that is just what we need. Uh, I told you last time that I had applied for a county committee, which is the um Resource Management and Climate Protection Committee. And I was selected for that committee. Yay. Yeah. So no sooner was that vote taken. I don't remember um Councilmember Battleos a Monday night or a Tuesday night, but then the first meeting was on Wednesday. So it was pretty quick. Um, and like drinking through a fire hose, I want you to know. So much information. I'm just, you know, Tiger, you would love it. There's so much. But really interesting project, I'm just gonna say a couple of words about that. I was very impressed with the kind of scale just in this one meeting, from a micro project in La Honda, having to do with what happens when we have power outages and the school can't function. And in La Honda, the school, like there's one, like two, maybe high school and elementary, there's twenty-two teachers, twenty of whom live in town. They, they can't draw water to run the school, like to flush a toilet or cook food if they don't have power, what to do. And that was the, the problem was already being discussed and resolved. So I got in on the, here's a proposal. And it was fascinating about these um portable, it's called power box batteries, these portable generators that are electric. Kind of counterintuitive. It's electric. There's no power. How do you use an electric generator? Well, it's charged up and ready to go. And the intention is, the concept is, to have these power box batteries ready for teachers to take home and have at their home so that they can function, so that they can support the kids. And there's a central site where the battery gets recharged. You bring it back. You can take out a different one, almost like a lending library kind of concept. And this battery is good enough to run a fridge um and household appliances. And it's, it's not practical to charge it at home. It needs the higher, to be able to charge it quickly. Uh, it needs to be charged at a, a commercial building. But it was just fascinating to see the kind of thinking that goes on in this committee about, you know, how to handle this, this relatively small, but super significant problem in La Honda. And then it went to this giant presentation. Tiger, you might know about the Tech Clean California Program that I'm just beginning to learn about. That has to do with single and multifamily homeowner, homeowners and how, it's an electrification incentive program. So we hear about, don't have a gas water heater, have an electric one. Um, but the mechanics of exactly how that can roll out and how those conversions can take place. Um, so this is an incentive program that's being figured out and rolled out. Uh, it's on many levels. There's also an issue about heat pumps for space and water heating. And, and learning how those kinds of alternatives could be implemented in built environments such as ours, right? So here's my little Lindemire Rancher that I'm sitting in right now. But, you know, if I'm ready to change my water heater, how do I consider a heat pump? What does that look like? And, and educating everyone, not just at the consumer level, but also the contractors. So that when you're, when you consumer contact a contractor and you say, I need to replace my water heater, they're well-versed in the different options. So it's a very interesting um sort of really peeling back the onion layers on some of the things that we get these high-level presentations about at the council level, but to really nitty-gritty figure out how it works at the implementation level or how we can even, we're not even there yet. We're, you know, how do we work at the education level to move to implementation? So when I have concrete things to bring to you, I will bring them, but for now, it's just a fascinating process of learning and um seeing what I can bring back to Pacifica and to my co-council members. And on that note, um, Councilmember Big Stick, we don't have to talk about it now, but you had mentioned something last meeting about refreshing our reach codes. And I'd like to know more about what that means. Um, and it occurred to me that I think, if I'm counting right, we're on cycle this year. And this would be a Tina and um, and Christian question, I think. About reach, uh, building codes, Title Twenty-four building codes being updated. And it feels like just yesterday that that was done in twenty nineteen, but it, and it was kind of just yesterday, but it's, it's coming around again because this is done every three years. So I'm sure we'll be hearing about it from staff, but my understanding is that each time it rolls around, because of Californians, California's high bar and goals for climate um addressing climate issues and greenhouse gas emissions, each time the Title Twenty-four is updated, it's gonna be a little more stringent. There's gonna be a little bit more expected. So really learning it now while it's getting ready to be rolled out will be. So really, learning it now while it's getting ready to be rolled out will be very helpful. There was a Coastal Cities Group meeting. It was the first meeting of the year with two new representatives, one from Dana Point and one from Fort Bragg. So it was sort of a getting to know you and let's set our agenda. So it was kind of a long meeting. The, the working agenda for the year has to be approved by the Cal Cities Board. But I think we put together a really, really good next steps for the work that's been done so far over the last two to three years in terms of educating coastal cities about sea level rise adaptation, about working with their local coastal plan updates, all the things that we have to do in Pacifica, every single coastal city also has to do. And is, you know, how do we make that process smooth? How do we work collaboratively with coastal commission staff? How the two staffs work together before we get to the point of coastal commission is hearing it? But all those many steps along the way. And so further education, webinars, all that kind of stuff to be forthcoming. So I'll stop there because that's a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, where to begin? Let's see, so on the thirteenth, I attended the county call for the electeds, speaking about COVID, the Omicron virus and testing. We heard from Senator Becker again, who's been everywhere, Jackie Spears, Scott Morrow. And it was very informative. We were kind of hoping that we weren't gonna have to have those anymore. But evidently, you know, with Omicron, we had to come back together to gather all that information so we could do the right thing for our communities. I had a few conversations with Tree City Pacifica, and there's some concerns about public noticing and then trees being cut down before we have a replacement plan in place. So I just wanted to echo those concerns. I attended the Open Space and then Park Advisory Committee. There's so many things that are going on within open space. And it's, it's always very informative to attend the meeting. So I encourage the community to also attend those, those meetings, they are open to the public. We had a, an update from GGNRA, which is the Golden Gate National Recreation Area. So the restrooms on Maury Point were not working again. And so everybody, we just wanted to let you know that they are on it. The rest, the restrooms that they had put in, I mean, they, they thought that they were gonna work better for the amount of people that are coming to Maury Point, but it's evident that they are not. So we're hoping that we're, they're gonna be able to do some work on them and perhaps bring in a different kind of toilet for those restrooms. I know that's a big deal because we need those restrooms open and people are really affected by that. I also wanted to let you know that the city is meeting with GGNRA again. Or maybe they already have, or sometime this week, just so you know that we are following up on all of the points that we had made in the first meeting with GGNRA. And we'll let you know how that goes, planning will be meeting with them. I met with some merchants on Palm Meadow who are looking to create a makers' fair in the space behind their businesses. And so as that moves forward, I'll be excited to let you know more about that. It's really wonderful to see merchants working together to bring something like artistic and fun to our communities. And on that note, I attended the Pacifica Environmental Family's History of Open Space presentation. I urge everyone to take a look at that. You know, I think we take our open space for granted to, you know, like it was just always here. And the fact of the matter is that our communities had to work super, super hard to make sure that that open space was protected and they had to raise money in order to get the land over to GGNRA. And so a lot of things had to happen with a lot of our community leaders. It was a beautiful presentation and I really appreciated it a lot. So I attend, I also attended the New Mayor's Academy through the League of California Cities. And so evidently, they should probably have a session on running the consent calendar, facilitating the consent calendar. And so I am a new mayor and I have things to learn. And I'm really hoping that my co-council would not have let anything happen within that period of time that would be, you know, illegal. So anyway, I wanted to address that. They did have an irregular meeting of the city council, they called it Dysfunction Junction. It's really funny, they just do like a comedy act of what to do, when not to do during a council meeting. However, the consent calendar was not part of that. So there was also a session on learning about your California cities, the League of California cities, and how to use them, developing an effective city council and city manager team, how that's really good. It's key to good governments in the city. And then a really long session on financial responsibilities and a city revenues workshop, which is telling for our, our agenda tonight. And so it was, is a good warm-up for me to start hearing the terms, to start learning the, all the different strategies that are out there. So there's still two more days of the Mayor's Academy next Thursday and Friday. So I appreciate the city for sending me to that. I like all the opportunities I can to learn. I will also, I also want to second everything that Mayor Pro Tem Big Stick said about the, all the information about the EIR and the draft plans. We are hearing you loud and clear. And, you know, we are also trying to go through these documents. So I know how hard it has been because I'm trying to do it myself too. So please know that we hear you and we're working on it and you'll hear more about that as we move forward. And I think that's it for me. Kevin, you are up. Oh, there's Michelle.
Actually, Madam Mayor, if I could just respond quickly to one of the comments that was made during oral communication, oral communications regarding the consent calendar. I just want to clarify this for the public and the council. Number one, the council has not violated the Brown Act by any means tonight with regard to how you handle the consent calendar. The consent calendar is, by its very nature and definition, a consent calendar can be had by one motion, one public comment period for all the items on the consent calendar. If a council member pulls a consent item, which did not happen tonight, then if the item is pulled off of the consent calendar and added to the agenda, then that item would not be discussed as part of the consent calendar. It would become a new agenda item that did not happen tonight. If it had, then there would have been a different public comment period for that particular item. So I just wanted to clarify that if council members have any questions about that. But really, I just wanted to make clear that there was no Brown Act violation with the way that the consent calendar was handled tonight.
Thank you, I really appreciate that, Michelle. Okay, City Manager Woodhouse, you are up.
Thank you, Mayor Beer and Mayor Pro Tem Big Stick and Councilmembers Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. My main communication tonight is I'm, I'm going to, I have a prepared report that I want to read about the Plan Pacifica documents for review. So it's a little bit lengthy, but if you bear with me, I'm just gonna read through this. It answers a lot of the concerns, at least at this point, the concerns that the community has commented, much of them during oral communications. So in addition to the PDFs provided at the beginning of the Plan Pacifica review period, the city has received requests to provide the documents in various other formats and with various search functionality, and has worked to accommodate those requests to make public comment as easy and as accessible as possible. As of today, staff has made available to the public the Microsoft Word versions of the Draft General Plan, Draft Sharp Park Specific Plan, and Draft Environmental Impact Report. These documents are available in the same location as the official PDF format versions at plannepacifica.org, under the Project Documents page. The public can download individual chapters in Word, Microsoft Word format. Although the Word format doesn't include the pictures and figures and fancy formatting that the final production PDF does, it allows for rapid download, very fast download by chapter. So you can select what chapter you want to download, download that in seconds. Ease of searching and cutting and pasting, et cetera, to make the documents ultimately accessible. It includes the tables and it includes the figure numbers for easy reference with the PDF version. The next improvement staff is working on is to make the table of contents interactive in the final production PDF. As a matter of fact, the chapter headings already have been made interactive and are live on plannepacifica.org and will continue to work on that interacting. The city continues to encourage comments on these important documents. The city began receiving comments about the document's contents mere hours after they were posted for public comment. So clearly, the documents have been accessible, but the city is interested in making them more accessible, has heard community suggestions for doing so, and is therefore spending the resources beyond what is required by law to achieve increased access and ease of review. We want to thank those in the community who have provided constructive suggestions about this matter and we've taken those actions. As a reminder, the public comment period on the draft EIR will end on February 21st at 5:00 PM. And comments on the general plan and Sharp Park specific plan, as Mayor Pro Tem Big Stick pointed out, can be submitted up until noon on the day of the Planning Commission hearing, which is anticipated for sometime in early May. Although the city does encourage submission of comments on the draft general plan update Sharp Park specific plan as early as possible, along with the forty-five day review period for the draft environmental impact report. Once comments on the draft environmental impact report are received, the city will prepare a response to comments document to be considered by the Planning Commission and City Council during hearings for certification of the EIR and adoption of the general plan update and Sharp Park specific plan. City staff will also strive to provide responses to comments on the general plan update and Sharp Park specific plan, although not required by law, if they are received in a timely fashion before the hearings. Otherwise, all comments received will be included as part of a written record to be considered by the commission and the council. Again, the documents are available at plannepacifica.org, under the Project Documents page. That completes my communication.
Go ahead, Mike.
I wanted to mention that I, and Kevin, I think I'm correct, you can correct me, is that next meeting, we will be hearing from the FAA on the flight paths and stuff. And so, you know, I know some people really follow that, you know, noise or sight, whatever. So the FAA will be doing a presentation next meeting.
Yes, you're right, Councilmember O'Neill. I know they were having a meeting on Friday and we're gonna confirm their availability for that date. That's the intended date. I haven't gotten final confirmation, but we do want to plan on that presentation, on a special presentation on the fourth.
Any other questions or comments for the City Manager? All right, it's break time, we'll come back at nine ten.
From the Board of Trustees from the Pacifica School District to really talk about this concept of a potential public private partnership project. And the concept that was discussed, and this is a concept that was initially raised by Councilmember O'Neil during our discussions about the Civic Center Campus renovations, was whether there's interest in exploring what would potentially be a win-win-win arrangement to achieve new PS, Minso School District. I'll call that PSD from now on. PSD administrative offices combined with affordable housing and a shared corporation yard between the city's Public Works Department on Malagra and PSD facility maintenance. And the idea here just specifically, although it could be brought into other potential arrangements, would be related to the administrative offices site of PSD and the city's Public Works Corporation Yard on Malagra. An appropriate first step in pursuing this kind of complex public-private partnership is to engage a financial services consulting firm that's familiar with public-private partnerships to conduct a preliminary feasibility assessment based on initial basic information about the city and about PSD properties and operational needs. And Councilmember O'Neil had requested that this item be agendized to consider a, an initial assessment at a, for a, not to see, not to exceed small dollar amount to accomplish that, that initial assessment. Of course, part of this type of assessment involves city staff also working with PSD staff. And I had, I did have a conversation with Superintendent Olson. And with, with all of the challenges that the school district has currently with COVID and keeping school open and budget in the spring. PSD's, or Superintendent Olson's input was, yes, we're interested in pursuing this initial assessment, but can it wait to commence until the summer months like, like August? So part of this process would be the city's purchasing process for any projects that exceed $5,000 would, would be to get multiple quotes from competitive firms. And so it'd be to design a scope of work, work with PSD staff and, and develop that scope of work and issue a quick RFP to, to hire a consulting firm to start the work. A few questions that I've identified that council could discuss and give input on tonight include, number one, just the basic question of should we solicit proposals for this type of preliminary feasibility assessment in collaboration with PSD? And then if yes, then does the council want to give sort of a, a not to exceed cost? It could be $10,000, it could be 15, it could be 20. I don't have a way to tell, you know, without the initial scope and input, which of those would be the most appropriate? And should the city fund it all or should it be shared with PSD? The city is kind of initiating this concept, so, so I, I think the school district's input might be that they would prefer the city to front this money for the initial assessment. And then should, what should the timing of the assessment be? Should it be matched up to, you know, for the summer months as, as PSD indicated, or does the council prefer sooner to pursue it? One of the alternative actions I'll point out is that, you know, this type of study is not currently on the city council priorities list, nor one of the ongoing priorities. So the council could, you know, defer it, defer a decision on this to discuss during goal session or, or something like that. But that summarizes the staff report and I can answer questions or if, I, I do see that Superintendent Olson's hand is up, so maybe she has some additional comments to make, whatever the mayor's prerogative is for handling this at this point.
I also thought maybe I would ask Councilmember O'Neil if he wanted to say anything before we go further. You are on mute.
Maybe have a, um, here, um, Kevin said that Heather's hand is up, so maybe hear from Heather and I could answer any questions if she might have.
Sure, that would be great to hear from, from Heather. And thank you for taking the time to be with us tonight, Superintendent Wilson.
It is my pleasure and I, I think no one appreciates the work of public officials more than, than we do. So thank you very much for all you do for the students and families of Pacifica. I don't have any questions. I'm not here to speak on behalf of the board because this is not something that we've discussed as a board. However, as the manager of the school district, I'm happy to represent our current thinking.
Okay. Um, thank you, Heather, for taking your time out because I know schools are being put through the wringer right now. I would maybe ask, is there any questions from my fellow council members on the proposal? Basically what it is, is to study the feasibility of moving our corporation yard on Malagra down to the school district site where their corporation yard is already. Then we would use our corporation yard, build a school district, district office and possibly another structure, so, or something on the ground floor of a council chambers or whatever we might deem fit. And then above that, we would have affordable housing. And I, I did get a proposal and I'm trying to look to see how much, um, at the, the Cal League Conference, I did, approach a firm and they gave, did send us in a proposal as to how much they would charge and I'm looking for that. So that when we give Kevin, if we give Kevin authorization, you know what I mean? We can do a not to exceed, you know what I mean, type of thing. So that's basically the proposal in a nut, in a nutshell. If there's any questions from council members at all?
And, uh, Councilmember O'Neil, I'll add that, that, that one initial conceptual quote that you got was, was a, around the $10,000 threshold.
I seem to remember around 10,000, but I'm looking and, you know, when you're trying to read something real quick, you can't find it, of course, right? It's like, you know, the TV's broken, you can, or car's broken and you can, never does it when this mechanic there. So is there any questions from any of my fellow council members on this concept? I do have another firm I will email to the city manager that's also approached me about doing this, so.
I have a question.
And Tiger had his hand up first, so.
Okay.
Actually, I'll let Councilmember Beckmeyer go first.
Okay.
Well, thank you so much. I didn't even raise my hand the right way. Um, I have a question of, I suppose the superintendent and the city manager, but specifically the city manager right now, in terms of staff interface with such a consultant, the way you described it in your staff report, it sounds like a finance focus. Does that mean it's Chief Financial Sustainability Officer, Yulia Carter, primarily at this juncture for the initial conceptual discussion? Or would it be planning DPW? Like, how do you envision that might go if you have even a sense of it at this point?
Yeah, I, I think typically in this kind of an initial assessment, it's going to be a team that consists of myself, planning, public works and finance, because what the consultant is going to need to know is operational space considerations. So that's the, you know, public works side. Certainly the, the finance side, the planning side would come in related to zoning questions, land use questions, et cetera. As well as probably I should add some initial to city attorney office time because there would, there would be questions about, you know, ordinance or use. But again, this is just a pretty quick preliminary assessment. So any of the involvement, involvement from all the departments would, we try to streamline it and be very quick about it. But there's just some, you know, it's like garbage in, garbage out. So you want to put good data into the assessment. So you, so that you get good output. So we want to make sure that the data going in is, is accurate and good.
Mayor Proten?
Thank you. Um, I'm not sure if this question is best directed to a council member.
Go away, go away, go away, go away.
I stopped because I wasn't sure if Mayor was still speaking. Okay.
Um, excuse me, I keep freezing. So, sorry about that.
No worries. So I wasn't sure if my question was best addressed to Councilmember O'Neil or to Superintendent Olson. The staff report says that the, the best likely timeframe for the school district would be August to December. And so my question is if that's the case for the sake of time budgeting, would it be best to stick this on the goal setting work plan for next year in the interest of the best possible time management or, or staff maybe would answer this too? Because I, I don't know how much time this is planning on taking and yet I, I do feel the sense of urgency to do it. But if it's not going to be something we can do until August anyway, would it be best to put it on the work plan rather than making a definitive decision tonight?
Do you want me to answer that? I think you have to remember if we do an RFP, this is the end of January. An RFP goes out for what? 30 to 60 days, Kevin? Something like that? 90 days?
I, I think due to the sort of concise and short nature of this one, it can be a lot quicker than that. A minimum of three weeks though.
Okay, so three weeks to put it together. And then at that point, we have to advertise it and put it out for firms to look at and see if they want to do it and have to allow a 30 days. So you're probably not talking much before April to May that the firm would, would hit the ground running. And then they could probably do a lot of the preliminary work with our staff before they go to the school district staff in August or late July, whatever it works out. And then at that point, you know, they do it, but I think the work plan, once you have the, the finished product, the work, then I think it would be appropriate for it to be on the work plan or work discussion for March 2023.
So I guess my question to Kevin would be, um, if we add this tonight and if, um, in April, that would be when the consultant starts talking to our staff, would that overburden our staff or would that be relatively insignificant?
Well, let me, let me back up. So what, what Heather, what Superintendent Olson and I discussed is that in scoping out the work that needs to be done, the school district staff needs to provide input into that scope of work. It doesn't need to, but, but should, you know, I, I would, I would want to consult with them. We could work to minimize the time they would take. But when the consultant begins work is, uh, so that's one, one piece of, of staff workload for both the city and the school district. But when the consultant begins work, that's when you're going to have meetings and gathering information about the school district's corporation yard and the city's corporation yard, et cetera. So, um, the, I think a, a good point made is that if we do the study, which in itself could be, you know, it's a, it's a semi-minor undertaking, let's say, compared to other RFPs and studies. But if it comes back positive, then the council would probably have interest in taking the next step. And that's when it's really necessary to be a, a work plan item, staff resources are prioritized on. So, so that would be the potential discussion in putting it on the work plan during goal set.
Thank you.
And, um, my, my comment on this is the biggest things this town has a lack of is space to build any sort of affordable housing and money for both the school district and, you know, the city. And this would try to combine, trying to accomplish the goals to help both entities as they move forward. Heather's box lit up.
Uh, I, I don't know if you can see me. I think I'm just on the audio end of this, but this was not on our radar at all. And so we love the original thinking beyond that. And I think that following a study of, of the value of the land and the feasibility of that would be of great value. We'd be happy to participate with you in the scoping out of that. Because for our chief business official, that does seem like a manageable task. But the actual work with, with staff realistically should happen after we get past this 2022 school year into the next school year. No one, no one dreamed that this one would be so hard.
I would reiterate that, that I do, I think Heather speaks from a very big reference point in terms of what schools are going through. But the thing is, is if, if we have a shared corporation yard that could down the road lead to a shared resources for like, you know, backhoes or dump trucks or whatever equipment they might need. Okay. So that, that's something that down the road might work better, you know, for shared expenses, shared savings for both entities.
Perhaps we should go to public comment unless there's other questions.
Sure.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay. Thanks, Josh.
Sure, Madam Mayor. We have three hands raised. Our first speaker is Dan, followed by Heather, I'm sorry, not Heather, Christine Bowles. Dan, you may now meet yourself.
Thank you, council members. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. March 23rd, 23 work plan, putting this on the work plan during goal session. I'm sorry, March 2023 commenced, new council chambers, moving the public works yard north, scoping out the project. The biggest thing, thing this town has ever had, a money revenue generation project, perhaps a leaseback rent, a shared corporation yard, shared equipment. There is extensive debate on the, this topic was clearly not properly noticed and you can't even take a vote on this tonight. Furthermore, I've heard the city attorney's comments. I disagree. Pursuit to the Bagley King and the Brown X. I hereby make a public record. King and the Brown Act, I hereby make a Public Records Act request for all the text messages between councilmembers O'Neill, Beckmeyer, and Vodderloss this evening, and ask that you deliver them to the city attorney tonight. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, Dan. Our next speaker is Christine Bowles, followed by Suzanne Moore. Christine, you may now meet yourself.
I want to start by just thanking Mike O'Neill for this idea and bringing this concept to the city and working with, I'm sorry, I don't remember your title, Superintendent Olson, thank you for your work and thought on this idea already. And I just want to express my support for this kind of public-private partnership with the Pacifica School District. I realize you have many issues on the council priority list and just wanted to advocate for adding this to your list for the coming fiscal year, and I hope it works out for the school district too. I know you've had a really hard year. This would also tie in nicely to the coming updates to the housing element. As you probably know, our almost 1,900 units we need to build in the next eight years with RENA call mostly for the construction of very low, low, and moderate income housing. This housing is nearly impossible to build without these kinds of public-private partnerships. Finding available land is the very first step. As you know, we've built no units that meet these income categories in the last two RENA cycles in the last 16 years. We need to understand that Pacifica will never be able to meet these higher required numbers by continuing our current policies that rely only on requiring market rate projects with eight units or more to provide a few below market rate units. As more and more Pacificans are priced out of our housing, we must aggressively pursue all possible options to create truly affordable housing for our teachers, staff, and other service sector employees that can't afford multimillion dollar plus homes. These partnerships take years to bring to fruition. Please put this on your priority list and hire a consultant to help review the feasibility. That's just the very first step. I'd be happy to also offer my time, architectural services free of charge to the city and school district. I can provide sketches and building code expertise that I know you don't have currently on staff and help you evaluate possible site options for affordable housing in particular. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. And our final hands that's raised is from Suzanne Moore. Suzanne, you may now meet yourself.
Thanks, Josh. Following Christine Bowles is just embarrassing because she is so thorough and, in this case, extremely supportive. And I too support exploration of the public-private partnership with PSD and thank you, sorry about the cat, Councilmember O'Neill for conceiving of this, and thank you staff for pursuing it, and thank you Superintendent Olson for being on board. Our need for below market rate housing is dire, and I hope that that's the type of housing that you would consider. And please pursue options to fill this need. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Mayor Beer, there's no more hands raised at this time.
Hey, thank you, Josh. Appreciate it. We'll bring it back to council for deliberation.
I also, I did want to bring up that we, the first floor, this is kind of what I was envisioning, one the council will be aware of, is the first floor would be public entity, you know, school district, maybe a council chamber, whatever, down at the bottom floor. Above would be affordable housing below market rate at whatever levels we can afford to sustain the project. However, that would probably be managed by a mid peninsula bridge housing or somebody like that. The city would not be the landlords for that. And I think that's something that the firm studying this would explore with, so to look at the finances and feasibility of this.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Neill. Comments from other council members? For Councilmember Beckmeyer.
I think this is a very interesting concept. I'm encouraged by the notion of the school district and the city partnering on something. I think we partner on things all the time, but not in this kind of official capacity. And I think that this is visionary. And in light of what I've seen with our neighbors, well, sort of our own school district, high school district here in town, right? But the process that has been going on with Jefferson Union High School District, I realize it's a different type of project, but the ingenuity, the thinking outside the box, all of that kind of stuff is what is needed. And that is why I'm so encouraged by this idea. And I would like to move forward. That would be my interest. I do want to make sure that we don't overtax staff. And I trust the city manager to, you know, to parse that out in terms of how that rolls. We've heard some comments about planning and maybe some things needing to move through the planning department. So that would be my only concern there. But as long as we can address that, then I think we should move forward. I would propose, since we're kind of the ones honchoing at this point, that the city cover the cost.
Thank you, Sue. Mayor Protem.
I'd just echo the sentiments of Councilmember Beckmeyer. I could not say any of it better.
Sue Vodderloss?
I know this is enlarging it, but I was wondering if there are any other public-private partnerships that could be obtained here too? Just thinking, that's all. So I'm sure that this is just the start of a great thing to come to pass. So thank you for initiating it. I know it's a lot of work, but I see it more in the future than today. I know that we're inundated with the general plan, the DEIR right now, and that's our most important thing at the moment, but this will come to pass soon. So thank you for getting it started.
I'd like to echo that as well. I think it's really important for us to be innovative. So thank you, Councilmember O'Neill, for all of that. And I think we should move forward, but we should absolutely honor the school district's preference for timing. I also agree that we should cover the cost for the preliminary assessment.
And I would just like to emphasize that the council's vote tonight is only authorizing a study for the feasibility of this concept. It's not authorizing the actual concept. That would be something, once we get this study, we look at and see, and we would be able to have the ability to check with the county and other sources to see if they could help subsidize the affordable housing elements.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
So I would like to make a motion to approve the item.
I'll second. I just want to make sure that, Kevin, do you have the direction you need?
I just want to clarify that. Is the motion to target the August timeframe with PSD or not?
That's okay with me. I mean, we have to kind of ask them, and I would actually put a dollar limit of $15,000 on this also. I think that one came in around 10, but there might be some additional items we come up with that look at.
I'll second Councilmember O'Neill's motion.
Roll call.
Hey, roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vodderloss.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Big Stick.
Yes.
And Mayor Beer.
Yes, and thank you again, Superintendent, for being here.
Yes, thank you, Heather, for coming.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your support.
Bye.
Okay, moving forward, we are on agenda item nine. I know we had someone who wanted to make a public comment about this earlier, so I just want to let Jesse, I don't think I wrote your last name down, Jesse Thomas, know that this would be the item that you will make your public comment, and I'll let you know when that happens. We have Chief Stidle here tonight to talk about the introduction of an ordinance to the city council, the city of Pacifica adding Chapter 32, sale or distribution of electronic cigarettes, and Chapter 33, sale of flavored tobacco products and pharmacy sales of tobacco products prohibited. And I'll hand it over to you, Chief. Thank you for being here tonight.
All right. Thank you, honorable mayor and council members. I'm Dan Stidle, your chief of police. And tonight I bring back, as promised, the ordinance on flavored tobacco and e-cigarette products. Next slide, please. So just a background of where we've come from in this conversation. This conversation was initially spurred regarding concerns about smoking and secondhand smoke and the attractiveness of flavored tobacco products to minors. We know that's drawn attention at all levels of government in our country. And this item was originally brought forward because councilmembers Beer and O'Neill at the time requested a report to city council for consideration regarding the potential for an ordinance discussing flavored tobacco. We provided that report to city council on January 13 of 2020. At that time, staff received directions from the city council on this item to wait until the outcome of Senate Bill 793. Next slide, please. You may recall Senate Bill 793 was Jerry Hill's bill on flavored tobacco. Now, in that Senate bill, tobacco retailers are prohibited from selling or offering for sale or possessing with intent to sell flavored tobacco products. There is also a carve out, though, that final product ended up with a revision by the author of the bill and a carve out that provided that hookah tobacco retailers with a valid license to sell tobacco products could in fact sell flavored hookah products as long as they do not allow persons anywhere on their premises under the 21 years of age. So although Senate Bill 793 did pass in the middle of 2021, a successful referendum placed that issue on the November 2022 ballot, which the state of California will decide the fate of that law. On October 17, 2021, city council adopted 17 priorities for staff, including, one of those priorities was to present an ordinance prohibiting the sales of flavored tobacco products in Pacifica. Because so much time had gone by since we initially talked about it, staff came back on September 27, 2021, and presented a report to city council regarding a potential flavored tobacco ordinance, seeking direction regarding what council would like to see in that ordinance. Next slide, please. So city council in September of last year directed staff to return with an ordinance for consideration with the following elements: prohibition on the sale of flavored tobacco with an exemption for adult-only businesses to sell hookah-related tobacco products, prohibition on the sale of electronic cigarettes, and prohibition on the sale of tobacco products at pharmacies. Next slide, please. So looking at how we got into this conversation, the tobacco industry documents do reflect the history of developing marketing and marketing products to youth as starter products, flavored tobacco products, that is. We know that the flavored tobacco products and menthol cools, they numb the throat, which tends to make people that are smoking especially youth feel like maybe they're not as damaging, they're able to ingest the smoke easier, flavors create a false impression that tobacco is perhaps less harmful. And the studies have shown that 81% of youth who have ever used tobacco products started with flavored tobacco products. Next slide, please. So regarding electronic smoking devices, there are several things they're called, e-cigarettes, vape pens, e-hooka. Usage by youth has been rising, we know, products have become more prevalent. High school students' use increased by 78% between 2017 and 2018, with one in five students currently using and one in 20 middle school students currently using these products. Next slide, please. So health issues related to e-cigarettes, health issues have been reported related to cigarettes. There were some deaths and hospitalizations of those using these products, including THC vaping products. CDC still investigating these incidents, a higher percentage which involve black market purchase THC vaping products. There have been no definitive conclusions. It's a matter that's still being looked into. They're trying to put together the data to correlate the two. But what I want to make clear tonight, as the THC vaping products have come up in our past conversations, THC vaping products that are approved at state testing labs that are licensed by the Bureau of Cannabis Control are legal to purchase in the state of California. And this discussion that we're having tonight regarding tobacco or flavored tobacco products is only about tobacco products. We're not talking about cannabis products or cannabis pens or anything like that. Next slide, please. So advocates of the electronic cigarette products, their side of the story, when you read the studies often says that these products help smokers quit smoking. However, the FDA says folks that want to quit smoking should use FDA-approved smoking cessation medications. There was a Harvard study that came out in 2019 that indicated that there may be health benefits to a smoker who becomes a long-term vapor in comparison to a long-term smoker, though, again, this contention remains unproven. The FDA calls e-cigarettes unhealthy, but recommends those who vape not return to cigarettes, but seek FDA-approved smoking cessation products. Next slide, please. So what I would like to do at this time is just start getting into some of the key definitions. These definitions are included in the proposed ordinance, but we need to understand to further this discussion. First of all, we're defining an adult in the proposed ordinance as anyone 21 years of age or older. An adult-only retailer is someone who allows entry into any part of the business only by adults or requires minors to be accompanied by a parent or guardian or other adult. This does not include a retailer who prohibits minors from entertaining or, excuse me, entering certain sections of the business. So things that we've talked about in the past, separate room in the back, separate aisles roped off, those are not considered adult-only retailers if they allow minors into a portion of the business alone without being accompanied by an adult. It's an all or none in the definition. So in terms of definition of electronic cigarette, as with most ordinances we've seen, we defer to Section 3121 of the California Tax and Revenue Code. It means any device or delivery system sold in combination with nicotine which can be used to deliver a person nicotine in aerosol or vaporized form, including but not included, limited to e-cigarette, e-cigar, e-pipe, vape pen, or e-hooka. Electronic cigarettes use include any component or part or accessory of such a device that is used during the operation of the device when sold in combination with any liquid or substance containing nicotine. Next slide, please. So the definitions in our proposed ordinance this evening, flavored tobacco product is any product that contains this constituent that imparts a characterizing flavor. Characterizing flavor is a distinguishable taste or aroma or both that has the taste or aroma of tobacco imparted by a tobacco product or any byproduct produced by the tobacco product. And the constituent is any ingredient, substance, chemical compound other than tobacco water or reconstituted tobacco sheet that is added by the manufacturer to a tobacco product during the processing, manufacture, or packaging of the tobacco product. I may have the next slide, please. As we're discussing prohibition of sales of tobacco products in pharmacies, a pharmacy shall mean any retail establishment in which the profession of pharmacy is practiced by a pharmacist licensed by the state of California where prescriptions are offered for sale, regardless of whether the retail establishment sells other retail goods. Next slide, please. So what, the sections, the proposed sections, we would be adding. So the sections, the proposed sections we would be adding to the ordinance tonight. 5-32 discusses the sale or distribution of electronic cigarettes. No person, tobacco retailer, or other legal entity shall sell or offer for sale or distribute any e-cigarette to a person within the geographical limits, excuse me, geographic boundaries of the city. So subsection B here, this is an important one to look at. So for tobacco retailers in Pacifica that currently have a city-issued tobacco retailer license, the provisions of Section A shall take effect upon the expiration of their current tobacco retailer license. So what we're trying to do, we have to understand the process of how our tobacco retail license process goes to understand when that effective date is. So our tobacco retail licenses in Pacifica are an add-on, if you will, to the business license. When someone applies for a business license or they renew their business license, if they are also a business that sells tobacco products, that is noted on the business license. They pay the extra fee for that, and the tobacco retail license becomes part of their business license. All business licenses in the City of Pacifica expire on October 31 of every year. So, and hence, what we're trying to say here is all tobacco retailer licenses also expire on October 31 of every year. So if an ordinance were to pass, be adopted by council, everybody that currently sells electronic cigarettes, and as we'll get to the flavored tobacco shortly, with the provisions in this ordinance, they would be allowed to continue these sales, you know, use up their current stock, whatever they have on order. And as of October 31, 2022, that's the date of the sales. Would have to be their last day of sales. One thing I did want to note, just a minor clerical error. The section that I have on the slide in red, 5-33.02A, that should actually read 5-32.02A. Should this ordinance be adopted and be moved forward for a second reading, when we bring the language for the second reading, we will correct that clerical error. Next slide, please. So the flavored tobacco products, and under 5-33 of the proposed ordinance, no person, tobacco retailer, or other legal entity shall sell or offer for sale or distribute any flavored tobacco product except as provided in subsection C, which we'll get to in a moment, which is going to discuss the it's going to discuss the hookah products. Subsection B, again, this is also right out of the same language it's used in the state laws as well as in the county ordinances that we see. There shall be a rebuttable presumption that a tobacco product is flavored tobacco if the manufacturer or any of the manufacturer's agents or employees in the course of their agency or employment makes a statement or claim directed to consumers or to the public that tobacco product has or produces a characterizing flavor, including but not limited to text, color, and/or images on the product's labeling or packaging that are used to explicitly implicit communicate that the tobacco product has a characterizing flavor. Next slide, please. So subsection C is the carve-out that Council discussed on the September 27 meeting. And subsection C says tobacco retailers that are adult-only retailers that sell flavored tobacco products for use with hookah pipe or hookah products shall be exempt from the requirements of subsection A, meaning that businesses that only allow persons 21 or over that have tobacco retail license may sell flavored hookah-related products. So one thing that I wanted to clear about for several questions that I've had over this past few days. So the City of Pacifica does not license our tobacco retailers as 21 and over, nor does the state of California. This is, you can consider this a self-imposed title that these businesses put on themselves. They do that for a couple of reasons. There are ordinances out there, like the one we're considering tonight, which allows, there are some cities that allow e-cigarettes or allow all flavored tobacco products if they don't allow people under 21 years. It's also what we're hearing from some of the retailers. It's also their attempt to curb access to these products by minors by allowing only people over 21 in there. So in terms of how many of these over 21 businesses we license, we don't have any record within our business license or our tobacco retailing license records that says whether they allow persons under 21 or not. That's, again, that's self-imposed upon them, and it would be their responsibility. Under this ordinance, for example, if this were adopted, that if they state that they only allow persons 21 and older, it would be their responsibility to enforce that if they wish to sell flavored hookah products. Now, the question becomes then, so how do we know that's what they're doing? That they're abiding by that? We would utilize the same compliance techniques with decoys or staff to make sure that they weren't allowing people under the age of 21 years of age in their business if they were selling, if they were a business that identifies as selling flavored hookah products. And again, subsection D, that's for tobacco retailers that regards when this takes effect. Again, the expiration date is October 31. So this ordinance would actually go into play these provisions on November 1. Next slide, please. So Section 5-33 discusses the sale or offer for sale tobacco products by a pharmacy, and prohibits that for the council's direction at that last meeting. It says, "No pharmacy or pharmacy employee or agent shall sell or offer any for sale, any tobacco product." No new tobacco retailer license may be issued to a pharmacy after the effective date of the ordinance. No tobacco retailer license may be renewed by a pharmacy after the effective date of the ordinance. And again, the pharmacies would have up until the expiration of the license, the current tobacco license, to come into compliance with the ordinance. Next slide, please. And there was one other section. This is not an addition, not a new ordinance, but it's an amendment to 5-31, which talks about our tobacco retailing license process. And it says that no license may issue to authorize tobacco retailing at a pharmacy. Next slide, please. So in terms of enforcement, the most likely way that this would be enforced as our tobacco ordinance is now violations are subject to a civil action brought by the city attorney, punishable by a civil fine payable to the city of not less than $100, not exceeding $1,000 per violation. So this would usually come in the form of administrative citation by staff, by city staff, normally an officer during an operation when we were conducting compliance checks or any time a violation would be found. Violations of the chapter in the discretion of the city attorney may be prosecuted criminally as infractions or misdemeanors, causing permitting, aiding, abetting, or concealing a violation of provision of the chapter shall also constitute a violation of the chapter. And then in addition to other remedies provided by this chapter or by other law, any violation of the chapter may be remedied through civil action brought by the city attorney, including, for example, administrative or judicial nuisance abatement proceedings, civil or criminal code enforcement proceedings, and suits or injunction relief. But again, your most common violations are going to be dealt with with a administrative fine. Next slide, please. So what I wanted to do is present to you, and I personally wanted to thank the Samatay County Tobacco Education Coalition for continually updating on their website the information about what others in this county are doing. So this chart that I have before you tonight, 11 jurisdictions within Samatay County, one of those including Samatay County itself, the county, have some form of tobacco ordinance in place related to e-cigarettes, flavored tobacco, or prohibition of sales of tobacco products at pharmacy locations. So as you can see, of those, there are six jurisdictions right now that prohibit e-cigarette, flavored tobacco, and pharmacy sales, all three of them. However, Redwood City allows sales of flavored tobacco only for onsite hookah consumption for those that were licensed before November of 2021 for that activity. And the City of South San Francisco allows e-cigarette sales and flavored tobacco sales only at adult 21 and over businesses. Next slide, please. So the recommendation of staff is easy, is to move to waive the first reading of and introduce by Title and Ordinance of the City Council, the City of Pacifica, adding Chapter 32, sale or distribution of electronic cigarettes, and Chapter 33, sales of flavored tobacco products and pharmacy sales of tobacco products prohibited, and amending Sections 5-31.03, limits on tobacco retailer licenses within Chapter 1 of Title V, Public Welfare Morals and Conduct of the Pacifica Municipal Code to ban the sale and distribution of flavored tobacco products, the sale and distribution of electronic cigarettes, and to prohibit the sale of tobacco products at pharmacies in the City of Pacifica. And with that, I would be happy to entertain any questions from council.
Thank you, Chief Stidle. Were there any questions from council?
I'd like to hear public comment.
Anybody else? Do you have any questions? No? Okay, we'll go to public comment then. And this would be the time, Jesse Thomas, to raise your hand and give public comment.
Okay, we have our first hand raised by Claudia, followed by Jesse. Claudia, you may now unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. I know it's been a long night, and I just wanted to quickly say that I am actually calling to speak on behalf of the retailers with Corona, COVID-19, excuse me, the way it's been and continues to go. A lot of people have suffered, especially some of these retailers and people. This will affect Pacifica as well with people losing their jobs. Possibly the business is going, you know, completely broke. And really, this needs to go back to the home where parents are teaching their kids, parents are controlling their children, and educating them better in schools. The last I heard, Pacifica was in 92% compliance, and the retailers, there wasn't much being heard about retailers selling to minors. So I believe people will just end up continuing to travel to other cities to buy their products or illicit markets or online, since there's much less control there. And we should just wait till November, the vote, and let the, till November, excuse me, and let the voters decide what is best for the city and the state. Thanks so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Claudia. Our next hand is raised from Jesse, followed by Rachel. Jesse, you may now unmute yourself.
Hello, Jesse Thomas here. I'm an employee at Fog Zone Smoke Shop in Pedro Point, and I just want to echo some of Claudia's opinions. It is a fact, I mean, majority of our business's income is from flavored tobacco. And frankly, guys, if this ban goes through, I'm going to lose my job. That's just a fact. I rely on this place to pay my rent and support my family. And on top of that, we have changed the lives. I know this sounds strange, but hundreds of people have quit cigarettes with our help, and I can say that confidently. Vaping does do good things for people. I myself have not smoked a cigarette in six years, and I've lost 130 pounds over this whole thing as a direct result of starting vaping and quitting cigarettes. And I just don't think it's fair that we take away the rights of many responsible, hard-working Pacificans because of the misdeeds of a few. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you so much for this meeting, and I hope you consider those points in your decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jesse. Our next speaker is Rachel, followed by Myra. Rachel, you may now unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Beer and City Council members of Pacifica. I'm Rachel Mazzia, Program Director for Community Research at the Stanford Cancer Institute. This evening, I'm here to share some important health data that the California Healthy Kids Survey collected from Pacifica's 7th grade students. A total of 263 7th graders responded to the 20-21-year survey, and 80% response rate was obtained through the survey. 25% of students responded, considered it a great harm if smoking or vaping occasionally. 53% viewed smoking cigarettes occasionally, and 42% using vape products occasionally were slightly or not harmful. 10% think it's very difficult to obtain cigarettes, while 6% think it's very difficult to obtain vape products. 20% felt cigarettes, and 29% felt vape products were fairly or very easy to obtain. The Truth Initiative surveys reveal that an overwhelming majority of 15- to 24-year-olds started vaping to decrease stress, anxiety, or depression. Of the Pacifica 7th graders who responded to the California Healthy Kids Survey, 31% said it was pretty much true or very much true that they felt sad and down. 37% said it was pretty much true or very true that they were easily irritated. The data I've just shared are preliminary indicators about how 7th graders in Pacifica perceive tobacco and vaping products as well as their mental well-being. I urge you to review additional data in this report. The physical environment, the place they live in, can play a crucial role in health promotion and deterring unhealthy choices. It shapes how young people and other vulnerable groups respond to tobacco and vaping, marketing, and other environments, especially where it remains unregulated. Thank you for listening and considering what you can do to safeguard the health and well-being of your community.
Thank you, Rachel. Our next speaker is Myra, followed by Kira. Myra, you may now unmute yourself.
Recording in progress.
Thank you, Myra. Our next speaker is Kira, followed by Lynn Adams. Kira, you may now unmute yourself.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Kira McClintock, and I represent the Samatay County Tobacco Education Coalition Youth Advisory Group. It is a point that you promote that the sale of flavored tobacco products is either using flavored tobacco products at a higher rate than the rest of the population, they're heavily targeted by tobacco companies, and flavored vapes are reducing the previous success of decreasing tobacco use. The U.S. Surgeon General and leading public health researchers have concluded that flavored tobacco products are starter product for you. Around nine out of 10 current and formal smokers start by the age of 18, and 98% start by the age of 26. 80% of young people who have used tobacco started with a flavored product. And 86.4 of California youth tobacco users have reported using flavored tobacco products. Seven out of 10 teen tobacco users have used flavored have used a flavored product in the last 30 days, and there are over 15,500 unique flavors of e-juice being sold. E-cigarettes are the most commonly-used flavored tobacco product among high school students, followed by hookah, cigars, menthol, cigarettes, and smokers tobacco. The tobacco industry spends $581.1 million each year marketing its California loan. Juul, an e-cigarette growing in popularity among youth, generated approximately $7 billion in e-cigarette sales in 2018 and currently holds 75.8% market share in e-cigarette. 203 youth who use tobacco products say that they use them because tobacco comes in flavors they like. And youth and young adults use e-cigarettes more than three times the rate as older adults in CA, California. 50% of youth shop weekly inconvenience stores, and 92% stores sell flavored tobacco products, including methanol. 40% of stores that sell tobacco place tobacco products near candy. Youth in lower-income neighborhoods are more likely to see tobacco advertisements at stores. 2014 study found that between 2014 and 2015, Two thousand fourteen study found that between two thousand eleven and two thousand thirteen, exposure to electronic smoking devices advertising on television increased by three hundred twenty-one percent among young adults and two hundred fifty-six among youth. Research advertising is associated with higher odds of use among middle and high school students. In California, youth cigarette smoking has increased to two percent, whereas youth vaping has increased by twenty-seven percent between two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen. In two thousand eighteen, ten point nine percent of teens reported vaping in the last thirty days. E-cigarettes are currently the most commonly-used tobacco product among young people in California and nationally. From two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, there was a surge in e-cigarette use among youth. Within a one-year period,
Kira, I'm so sorry to cut you off because your time has finished, but thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Kira. Our next speaker is Lynn Adams, followed by Elias. Lynn, you may now unmute yourself. Lynn Adams, you may now unmute yourself.
It may be hard to believe, but Pacific Coast Television has been serving the coast side since nineteen sixty-eight.
In Pacifica, it turned out, there was in fact a TV class at Oceana High School. And what wound up happening from there was this gal that was working with them said, hey, let's get our own little studio here in Pacifica. Studio Seventy then became really the first local cable station here in town, becoming one of the first, if not the first, cable station in the country.
So Rick Miller is gonna get a chance to kick Taronova into a good shot here. Now, if he gets a good pen off, he can give the pressure on Oceana.
Old, black-and-white cameras, PCT covered the Pacifica oil
Individual choice, and I think we should leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Elias. Our next speaker is
Pardon me, pardon me, Madam Mayor, can I interrupt for just a brief moment? I have PCT going in the background, and I'm noticing that we don't seem to be broadcasting. I'm not sure if there's a legal implication to that. I just wanted to bring it up in case there was an issue.
Madam Mayor, we do need confirmation from the city clerk that we are still broadcasting. So we need to hear from the city clerk.
Thank you.
I would propose just taking a small break so that I can check in with PCTV.
Okay, take a three, five-minute break.
I see where I could turn mine on, that we're broadcasting.
I just heard the music turn off, but I've been hearing the music turn on and off. I tried to verify through the streaming at one point, and that didn't go through. And then when I looked at the television a moment ago, the music was playing rather than the broadcast, so.
Yeah, I'm waving right now, and it's, it's showing up on the TV, so. I think we are broadcasting.
We'll skip for a minute to check.
I'm hearing back from PCTV that they're having some connection issues, so it may be spotty at the moment as far as broadcasting in and out. And now they're saying that it appears that we are broadcasting now.
So let's continue, Madam Mayor, until we get formal notice, and the city clerk should hopefully, is hopefully listening. Until we get formal notice from PCA, and the city clerk will monitor that regularly, we will continue broadcasting. But thank you, Councilmember Bigstick, for raising that issue.
And thank you for your guidance, Michelle. Appreciate it. So we will go back to public comment.
All right. Well, Tricia Barr, you may now unmute yourself.
Thank you, city council members and Police Chief, Chief Stidle. My name is Tricia Barr. I'm a parent of three teen boys and the co-chair of the Samatello County Tobacco Education Coalition. I'm also on the high school site council with teachers, administrators, staff, and students. As you probably already know, when Pacifica adopted its ordinance, original tobacco retailer permit ordinance, Pacifica was in, a leader in the county and the region. And I commend you for taking the steps to move forward to bringing the current ordinance to be consistent with other area jurisdictions and to continue to to have a strong ordinance by keeping these addictive products out of the hands of our youth and in ways such as, as you're doing by prohibiting the sale of the tobacco products in pharmacies and the sale of e-cigarettes and flavored tobacco, albeit with an exemption for, for the flavored tobacco for hookah, which is not, not recommended. The Coalition recommends the following non-substantive changes that align with best practices used in the county and throughout the Bay Area. One is preventing additional tobacco retailers for taking advantage of the hookah exemption for the twenty-one and up businesses by adding language to cap the, the number of businesses. I believe there are three right now that sell and, and have, are considered adult-only and fall under that definition. And then, and to ensure that that exemption doesn't pass to any new retailers when they sell the business. And the other is, as there already is a universal implementation date of October thirty-first, but really moving that up to sixty to ninety days is a typical implementation period and gives retailers time to sell what they have in stock and stop their orders.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm getting word that the broadcast has been interrupted again on PCTV.
Okay, City Attorney, what do you recommend?
We need to take a break unless the city clerk has heard that, that it's not likely that broadcasting will resume. So we, we can do this. I suggest we take a, not a five-minute break, but a three-minute break.
Okay.
Just so we can hear back from, and, and really, we should just turn off our video and sound and just wait until we see the city clerk.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay. I saw Sarah pop up. Hello, council members. We're just waiting to hear from Sarah.
Yes. Hi.
Hi.
So I was just talking to the city clerk, and she is still working with PCT to see if we are back up. I will say that they are definitely having connection issues and that unless the clerk can come back and say that they have resolved their issues, unfortunately, I think we're gonna have to postpone the rest of the meeting until we can resolve this issue, just because we're gonna, every, you know, every sentence, we could lose connection, and then I'm gonna tell you we have to take a recess, so.
Right.
It's not gonna be a very efficient use of your time, and I know we're close to having the council deliberate and make a decision, but I really do think that we're, let's wait until we hear back from the city clerk. But if the city clerk cannot give us a definitive response from PCT that they've resolved the issue,
Okay.
that's my suggestion. So let's, let's just continue to be in recess until the city clerk joins us.
Okay.
Okay.
Council members, I apologize, we're not able to resolve the issues.
The city clerk, we need to wait until we have a quorum so we can call the meeting to order.
We have a quorum?
Council members, I'm just on screen to report that we, it seems that we are not able to resolve the issues on PCTV and to resume the broadcast and we'll have to adjourn the meeting at this time.
Okay, so we are adjourning the meeting at 10:33 PM. Night.
...